On earth as it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation but deliver us from evil. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Armin Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Rita Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Malanazo.
Here.
Counselor Ramirez.
Counselor Broderick.
Here.
Counselor Caulfield.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Ask folks to rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers in memory of Edward Finnegan. I know many, almost everybody here knew Mr. Finnegan. He was a well-known local attorney, member of the License Commission, also a family man and generally good guy. And he passed away over the weekend after a long battle with cancer, and I think it's appropriate that we honor in his memory. If anybody else would like to add, Counselor Caulfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Edward Finnegan is probably a great reason why I love the city. As you indicated, a devoted father, husband, avid golfer. He volunteered 20 years of his life to the Lowell Recreation Department Basketball League and just one class person. And as you indicated, he served in the Lowell License Commission and conducted himself with dignity at all times, at all times, and may he rest in peace.
Okay. Please rise in a moment of silence. May he rest in peace. Before we begin the formal agenda tonight, we have a special presentation to Alan Qasad, a director at Casey Family Services, recognizing Earned Income Tax Credit Day. I have a proclamation which I would like to read briefly and then recognize Mr. Qasad for some remarks. As the Internal Revenue Service and stakeholders wish to raise public awareness about the earned income tax credit and educate the public about the requirements to claim the credit and where his volunteer tax preparation programs play a crucial role in reaching taxpayers, certified volunteers are trained to educate taxpayers in identifying their eligibility for the earned income tax credit. And whereas two other items of importance to low-income taxpayers will be priorities in 2007, including the telephone excise tax refund and the split refund option, now therefore I, William F. Martin, Jr., mayor of the city of Lowell, do hereby proclaim today, February 13, 2007, as National Earned Income Tax Credit Day and urge all citizens to consider volunteering giving this 13th day of February 2007. Going to present this proclamation to Mr. Qasad, but ask him really to explain some of the benefits of this program because it does go unclaimed and it really is a powerful incentive and benefit to many people of low income and it goes unclaimed, they don't get the full benefit. And so this is an important initiative for people here in the city, and I want to thank Casey Family Services for raising awareness of this. Mr. Qasad.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight to the city council. I appreciate your time. The earned income tax credit, as you may know, is a refundable tax credit that puts much-needed money in the hands of working families whose incomes, for a married family with two or more children, with income below $38,000 a year, they can recognize over $4,000 in earned income tax credit from the federal government. This year, we estimate that nearly $13 million in earned income tax credit monies will go to deserving residents of Lowell, Massachusetts. And we also estimate that an additional $2.5 million will go unclaimed because residents fail to recognize the importance of filing for this credit. The Lowell Earned Income Tax Credit Partnership, which is made up of Casey Family Services, the city of Lowell, community teamwork, the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, John De Arre Credit Union, Lowell Public Schools, Lowell Housing Authority, the Lowell Senior Center, MACOM, Credit Union, Pollard Memorial Library, and UML Radio combine to both increase
is the vote to authorize the school department to begin negotiations for a new school bus
awareness within the city of Lowell to make residents aware of this opportunity to get
contract. Mr. Lang is here from the school department and has another meeting to attend. Is there any objection to taking that matter out of order? Okay, so we'll move to that item.
a refundable tax credit as well as providing free tax preparation in two sites here in
It's a vote authorizing the school department to proceed under the provisions of Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 30B, for the issuance of an invitation to bid to provide regular
Lowell. The two sites are at the Senior Center Computer Lab, and that lab is open on Thursdays from
education transportation services for the Lowell Public Schools. Motion to waive the first full reading by Counselor Broderick, second by Counselor Elliott.
8:30 to 11:30 a.m. There is also a free tax preparation site at the Mercier Center, which is open on Tuesdays
All those in favor of that motion say aye. Any opposed, the first full reading is waived. Second reading by title, a vote authorizing the school department to proceed under the
and Thursdays from 5:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 in the evening, and on Saturdays
provisions of Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 30B, for the issuance of an invitation to bid to provide regular education transportation services for the Lowell Public Schools.
in February from 9:30 to 11:30. This is a campaign that puts dollars in the pockets of residents who need it most,
Questions? Counselor Rita Mercia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support this vote, but I just have a question that I wasn't aware of. Does contracts executed for more than three years just apply to transportation contracts
the working families in Lowell whose incomes are below $38,000. And I thank you for your time and your recognition of this program and helping to build awareness.
solely and that we as a council have to vote on it, or does it apply to any other different type of contracts that is executed over three years?
Thank you.
What's the answer to that, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager.
The requirement of Chapter 30B is that contracts can only be three years. Anything above three years requires the approval of the legislative body. So this would be, so specifically to your question, this would only be for this contract that you would go beyond three years.
Well, what if we had another contract for leasing a building over three years? Would that then come before this council?
That should come before the council as well.
Okay, so it isn't just about transportation contracts?
No.
It's any contract in general?
Right.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Malanazo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you too, the city manager, to Mr. Lang. This particular bus company, North Reading Transportation, is this the first year, the first three years we've been actually using this company, if I recall?
Yeah, the existing contract with North Reading expires on June 30 of 2007. This was their first.
The current contract that we have was the first time we actually had them under contract?
Correct. This is the first time we've had a contract with this vendor.
Okay, and we've been satisfied for the last three years?
Yes, yeah, they've actually been a very good contractor for three years.
Okay, thank you.
This is not a vote.
Right.
To authorize a new contract.
Right.
It's to go out and solicit bids for new contract. Okay, any further questions? Roll call.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Armin Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Ramirez.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Eight a's, one absent.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes from the February 6 meeting. Any questions or corrections in the minutes? Motion to approve by Counselor Broderick, seconded by Counselor Malanazo. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the minutes are accepted. The next item is a presentation from Mark Young, the executive director of the wastewater treatment facility. This matter is in response to previous council motions for an update on the ongoing sewer separation project and other sewer projects going on in the city. Recognize Mr. Young as soon as he's got a minute to get settled.
Mr. Manager, city councilors and citizens of Lowell, I want to thank you for allowing me to give you a presentation and to update you on the wastewater utility CSO program and our capital improvements program. I'll be talking, I'll be updating you on our CSO control plan progress, odor control planning, facilities capital improvements planning, and our funding. Basic question, what is a CSO? And very simply, a CSO or combined sewer overflow is when a combination of storm water and wastewater is discharged to the river when either the treatment plant capacity or upstream sewer pipes cannot handle all the flow. And typically in Lowell, most major storms or most minor storms will necessitate us to discharge to the river and have a CSO. This is a picture of the Beaver Brook CSO structure on Martin Street. During dry weather, obviously you will not see a discharge, and the wet weather is that's an actual CSO discharge into Beaver Brook from the station. Lowell has nine CSO stations. We have four on the north bank of the Meramec River at what we call Beaver Brook, West Street, Reed Street, and First Street. And we have five CSO structures on the south side, one off of Walker Street, Tilden Street behind the Saugus Arena, Warren Street behind the parking garage, and two directly across from the treatment plant at what we call the Meramec River and Baris for their CSO With the city's long-term control plan agreement with the agencies, one of the agreements we have is that we are going to implement our long-term control plan in phases. Phase one that we are currently undergoing ends in 2011, and the city will initiate phase two long-term control plans after 2011. Components of phase two will be identified in 2010, 2011. We do meet with the agencies periodically. Matter of fact, we met with them two weeks ago to update them on our progress and to make sure that everything that we're doing complies with what they want and we have a smoother relationship and smooth operation and they fully understand the priorities of our program. And as you know, we've just completed a lot of work. There's a lot of projects that we were able to finish. The remote diversions, which allows operators at the treatment plant to automatically start CSO divisions at stations when needed. We no longer have to send personnel out on the road. We have wet weather modifications that were done at the treatment plant itself. We had some sewer separation on two areas of Vana Maeve, and we did some considerable improvements and upgrades to Tilden Street CSO Station, Beaver Brook, Meramec River, and Lowell sewer separation program in phase one, CSO control plan, is mandated by EPA and DEP. This was the CSO policy that EPA has mandated all communities throughout the United States, not just Lowell, that communities that have CSO problems have to mitigate CSOs. In addition to Lowell, Lawrence, Havo, Nashua, New Hampshire, and Manchester, New Hampshire also have CSO control plans. The five communities are in various stages of their phase one plan. And I know you see the recent communication from the manager in regards to a couple of our sister communities who haven't been as prudent as Lowell in acting on the CSO mandate, and they've actually been fined by the agencies for dragging, complying with the regulation. We have worked with the agencies in that if the city's idea was if we're going to spend a lot of money to mitigate CSOs, let's give some benefit back to the community and back to the citizens. So we identified a need to address localized sewer system searchажing, street floodings, and people that have backups in their basement. And we have an agreement with EPA that we spend the money in upstream portion of the system, correct local problems. We're correcting local problems for the citizens, and we're complying with EPA's CSO mandate. Obviously, the program benefits, as I just stated. This is a picture of Six and Emory, and you can see that during a storm, there's a considerable backup for that neighborhood. This is what our program will eliminate and allow us to comply with the federal and state regulations. Also, we have a need to eliminate private inflow from the sewer system, such as sump pumps, roof pumps, and yard drains. This adds a considerable flow to the treatment plant and impacts us as it takes up unnecessary capacity that we really need. Our phase one project areas, up the top, we have the Six and Emory area of Pawtucketville, which is currently undergoing sewer separation. And we're looking at two other areas for future work, what we call Gorm Area and Chemsford Area. They're rather large areas, and that is going to be work that we're going to be doing a portion of this year that we'll put out to bid and in future years. We're also looking at study area of the Douglas Road Wentworth Ave area. There was considerable issues in this area. And although we do not have money earmarked for sewer separation, we are looking at some low-cost alternatives to deal with the issues in this area. This is the Six and Emory project area, and I will tell you that this project is roughly 90% complete. It's been a very successful project for the city. We've also had a good collaborative effort with UMass Lowell in regards to this project as their contribution, their financial contribution to the city is $725,000 to allow them to tie into our drain system. At the beginning of this project, we had a catastrophic event in the city. We had the flooding in May of 2006. At the start of the project, we called a timeout with the engineer and with the construction, engineer consultant, and construction firm, and basically we said, what can we do to help the citizens in this area or any other area where we do sewer separation work? One of the ideas we came up with was backflow preventer or tide flex valves, that if the river elevation gets high enough where we discharge storm water, this will prevent the river or brook from backing up into the streets, similar to what happened in the flooding section before catastrophic flood where it overflowed the riverbanks. The Six and Emory project, I think, is a great success for the city, supported by the manager and the council. And I think, as they say, a picture says a thousand words. Up top, this was July 2006, catastrophic rainstorm. Those houses had four feet of water in their backyards. October 2006, there had actually more rain than this storm than there. Nothing. All went to the river. No problem for these citizens. The impetus to install those tide flex valves was to protect the citizens on Alma Street, Rosemont, Martin, and Lafayette area. Just a brief schematic of the value of the tide flex valve. With the river at normal depth like now, it's not a problem. When the river level gets high, without the tide flex valve, it can back up into the drain line, back up into the catch basins, and flood the neighborhood streets. But with the valve, water cannot back up, cannot impact the homes. Obviously, if the river were to get high enough to overflow the banks, the valve's not going to do anything. It's not made to do that. But it'll offer a lot of protection to the neighborhood from rising waters from storms. Our Six and Emory project is 90% complete. It'll be done this summer. We have a short section on, in front of the university that we're going to complete, and then final paving. And then the two sections that we're looking at to actually put out to bid this year are what we call the Wellman Street Separation Project on Chemsford Street and the Weed Street Separation Project area. These projects we have scheduled to bid out sometime this summer or late summer. In addition to our work, we're coordinating with other city departments for infrastructure coordination, such as the water plant, if there's going to be any water main replacements that needed to be done in conjunction with our work, also with DPW in regards to roads that may need to be paved. We are working with the railroads to get easements and access because we have to go underneath some of the railroad lines to have a point of discharge when we have a metal Chemsford and Gorm is going to be the city's first CSO separation project that's going to deal with a lot of private inflow disconnection. There are a lot of sump pumps in the Chemsford Street, Stevens Street area. And the city collaborated with Lowell's, Lowell's project on sorting drainage for that area. The Lowell's people really stepped up to the plate in their installing at a cost of roughly a million and a half dollars, a drain line through their property that we're going to connect to. They're actually installing the drain line that we would have put in industrial ave at considerable cost to us. You don't have to impact the neighborhood or traffic by going down industrial ave. And they're paying for the pipe and the installation. They're also paying for a section of sewer line that'll go behind Newell and Wellman Streets that we can tie into. So they really stepped up to the plate and saved the city considerable amount of dollars. I mentioned private inflow removal. It's very costly to identify. It's expensive to remove. But it is an issue with us because of the amount of capacity it takes at the treatment plant. And the one thing the treatment plant does need is capacity. It also has a condition in our permit that when we meet capacity, the city has to take steps to address our capacity issues. With our consultant, we are developing a private inflow removal plan and some options that we will be presenting to the manager within the next couple of months in which direction the city can take to deal with the inflow, private inflow problem. I mentioned that we're looking at the Wentworth Douglas Road area. We're evaluating drainage in this area. We have found that the wetland flow is restricted by beaver dams. We've had taken, we have taken some steps and removed some of the beaver dams and alleviated the flow in the Wentworth area. Now we're looking at the wetlands in the Douglas Road area. The Clark Road culvert in Tewksbury has also been identified as a restriction, and we'll be working with the town to see if we can alleviate that problem. Our goal in this area is to look at problems with the wetland drainage before we're going to go and possibly spend considerably, considerable money for sewer separation. There's a good possibility that we may not have to spend a lot of funds for sewer separation for this area. We want to investigate all possibilities of being able to help the citizens in this area with the lowest costs as possible. A facility-wide assessment, we recently engaged a firm of CDM, Wooden &amp; Curran. They did a teaming effort to evaluate the wastewater treatment plant needs and odor issues. As most of you know, the plant is almost 30 years old, and we have a lot of major capital needs at the treatment plant. A lot of equipment is exceeding its useful life. It's old, and it presents a lot of problems with us for us. Essentially, we haven't done any capital improvements since the year 2000. We had a small capital improvements line item in our budget, but after 9/11, because of the state financial crisis, we had to eliminate that line item. So in essence, the utility is seven years behind in our capital improvements program. Some of the failing equipment contributes to the odor generation, and it really needs to be looked at. We want to do a system-wide facilities assessment to prioritize the capital improvements that we're going to need. As part of the capital improvements plan of the CIP, we want to include an odor mitigation plan. We recently concluded a study of the odor at the facility to characterize and quantify the odors and identified the five major sources. Out of those five major sources, the erosion process at the treatment plant, typically the most odorous, is the one we identified that needs immediate action. When our, when the engineering firm contract is signed, one of the highest priorities we are giving to them is to start upgrade designs for the, for the erosion system so that construction can start this year. This is the priority that we want, we want, we're tasking them to move forward to. We know this is the worst odor producer at the treatment plant. This is what we want addressed first. We will, we will develop an odor mitigation plan that'll be finalized later this year that'll deal with all the other sources of odor. As you, as you can guess, it'll be very expensive to mitigate all the sources of odor at the treatment plant, but we want to prioritize, spend the money wisely, and take care of the worst sources, and develop a plan that we can put out over a years, a few years that can take care of the odor problem at the treatment plant. We're hoping to have the capital improvements plan finalized late this year. That'll allow us to prioritize the items that we need to address, that we need to improve. Also, we have a continuation of the long-term control plan for CSOs. We have the, we have the, thank you. We have the phase one that we're in now that will be concluded in 2011 and the future phase two. We have the odor mitigation and the facility capital improvements plan, and infiltration and inflow reduction, which is flow, regular groundwater that enters our sewer system through leaky pipes and cracks that by permit we're mandated to, to address, along with private inflow removal. Funding sources, we have the existing enterprise fund and $50 million bond that'll take care of the projects that we're doing now, but not the future separation and future capital improvements projects. We will always make an effort to seek additional state or federal funding, be it SRF loans or VA HUD grant, grants from the federal government through the congressman's office, and of course, if needed, a rate increase. We've done a lot of work in the last few years in regards to CSOs, and we've had a very successful project in the Six and Emory area. But as you can see, we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work in the future. Your support was able to alleviate this problem for these citizens and other citizens in the area, and I hope with your continued support, we can continue with all the work that we need to do with the wastewater, at the wastewater treatment plant and throughout the sewer system and benefit the citizens as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Caulfield?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mark, that was an excellent presentation. I know the amount of work that's been done at Six and Emory and Alma Street, Lafayette Street, and that entire neighborhood, and balls are construction. Mr. Manager, you probably got some feedback that they were just excellent, and I've heard that from my constituents in that neighborhood. They just did a great job. The one question I have, Mark, and I brought this up at the subcommittee meeting a while back, is Wentworth Avenue, has anything we've done about the beaver dams that are being constructed there? Is there anything we can do to alleviate that problem?
Yes, Counsel. We did remove one of the be, one of the beaver dams in the Wentworth drainage area. We're looking at the drainage area in Douglas We've done a lot of work in the last few years in regards to CSOs, and we've had a very successful project in the Six and Emery area. But as you can see, we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work in the future. Your support was able to alleviate this problem for these citizens and other citizens in the area, and I hope with your continued support, we can continue with all the work that we need to do with the wastewater, at the wastewater treatment plant and throughout the sewer system, and benefit the citizens as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Caulfield?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mark, that was an excellent presentation. I know the amount of work that's been done at Six and Emery and Elmer Street, Lafayette Street, and that entire neighborhood, and Balzak Construction, Mr. Manager, you probably got some feedback that they were just excellent. And I've heard that from my constituents in that neighborhood. They just did a great job. The one question I have, Mark, and I brought this up at the subcommittee meeting a while back, is Wentworth Avenue, has anything been done about the beaver dams that are being constructed there? Is there anything we can do to alleviate that problem?
Yes, Counsel. We did remove one of the, one of the beaver dams in the Wentworth drainage area. We're looking at the drainage area in Douglas Road to see if there's any. We suspect that there may be one more, but naturally in the wintertime, their activity is, they hibernate. So we may not be able to remove that dam if it exists until springtime.
But they're being addressed.
Yes.
And the other question, Mr. Manager, the town of Tewksbury, are they cooperating with that culvert? It's, it's their problem, and they, are they cooperating with us?
We are having ongoing discussions with Tewksbury, and they are cooperating with us on that.
Thank you. Once again, Mark, it was an excellent presentation, and I thought it was wise that the taxpayers and the viewers at home saw it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rita Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Young, I was remembering way back when, when the EPA and the federal government mandated this more or less unfunded mandate that we have to separate the sewer system, the combined sewer overflow and separate it. And at that time, I remember the total cost at that time, if we did it from start to finish, would have been something like $330 million. That figure sticks out in my head. So what I'm asking you at this point, if you could provide us with some sort of a paper outline as to what the state has contributed towards this, what the federal government has contributed towards this, what the city has bonded thus far, and, and project how much more we have to go, if you could just, I know you probably don't know the figures on the top of your head, do you?
Well, as far as bonding, Counsel, we bonded $50 million already, that, SRF loans, that I could tell you. I do have a breakdown of the VA HUD grants that we received since, I think, since 2000. I do have a breakdown of that. I don't have it off the top of my head like you say, but I can provide you that if you would like.
I thought there was some question at one point where the federal government wanted us to bond like 90 million, and we thought that was too high. We settled for like 65 million, so it went back and forth, so I didn't know exactly what the price was. I guess it was 50 million after all, right?
Our project is a $65 million project. If you remember from those negotiations, the total cost that they wanted us to spend for, for the city was 365 million.
Yes, but then we said that we'd do it in like phases because we couldn't afford the whole shebang to burden our people. They're burdened enough without putting this on their plate. But if you could provide me with some sort of financial graph or outline of what, what we've spent so far, what we've gotten from the state or grants or whatever, that'd be helpful of me. Thank you.
We'll provide you with that, Counsel.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, we will move now to the public hearings. There are two hearings scheduled for 7:00 PM. The first is the second reading of the vote accepting Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 32B, Section 16, offering optional voluntary medical insurance to be provided by a health care organization commonly called an HMO. We will open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this item? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Just come forward and please give your name and address for our minutes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is, and through you to the city council, my name is John Magnner. I speak tonight on behalf of SEIU Local 888, Chapter 159, and this is our chapter president, Michael Sheen. We represent approximately 350 school employees in the departments of custodial maintenance, security, cafeteria, library, and general office staff. I am their bargaining representative currently at the table in negotiations. We work, live, and vote in this community. Health insurance is of vital importance to us and our families. It has been determined time and time again throughout the Commonwealth that the subject of health insurance is a mandatory subject of collective bargaining. We believe that collective, the collective bargaining process is vital to protecting our health benefits. That process allows us and the city to make a more informed decision after all the parties bargain in good faith and have a chance to examine and support or reject the proposals that are made. We, as a union, believe that the city council, that if the city council votes here tonight to accept the provisions of this chapter without first requiring the school committee's bargaining representatives to place the issue on the table in ongoing negotiations, then the city and the school committee will be in violation of our collective bargaining rights. It is my hope that before casting your vote on this matter, that would dramatically affect the constituents of Lowell that you and I represent, that you take into consideration the legal, political, and moral ramifications of that decision. Please let the school committee fulfill its bargaining obligations to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I just wanted to give you a couple of things. The, on the issue, I'm not, I'm not quite sure that I'm speaking against it or speaking for it, but I am speaking for some consideration about modification of the motion. The paper that you have in front of you is the original document that was distributed to the, the city council two weeks ago, in anticipation of consideration at that meeting, I believe on the first. Later in the, on the Tuesday, excuse me, the day of the meeting, I spoke with Mr. Lynch, city manager Lynch, and at that point brought up the discussion about the original document, including a provision that says through collective bargaining. As a result of that conversation, the document that you actually considered that night had that expunged from the document. I think that the adoption of the first document and the motion made concerning through collective bargaining really comes to the essence of what our issue is here. As you know, the school department has been in negotiations with the school committee for six or seven months on this issue. Health insurance has been on the table. We have a proposal that we believe would be a win-win in offering greater opportunity for teachers to choose other products at a lower cost, considering that the master medical is the most expensive cost there. But for us to feel comfortable to recommend that to our members, we have to feel as though there has been concrete and comprehensive bargaining over that issue. The, the issue of adopting 32B is an interesting one in that certainly the city council and city, several city managers have worked under the presumption that you had adopted it some 20 years ago. I would say Dick Johnson, Brian Martin, and John Cox all believed that it had been adopted, and it was presented in a certain way at the bargaining table to all municipal unions. Certainly, I spoke with Keith Rudy, spoke with the people from the fire, police department, and it was presented as a normal course of business at ongoing collective bargaining. It was never interpreted in a way that says adoption of 32B, which you, which you believed you had already adopted, mandated that the offering of an HMO be given directly to members or only with a cursory bargaining. We are at the table. We have a proposal at the table. We believe our, our proposal will be much more beneficial than this sort of pushing it upon us without comprehensive bargaining. How can we recommend it to our members if we don't have the protective language to protect our indemnity plan and other plans that we think would be beneficial to our members? You know, the Lynch interpretation of 32B would preclude any substantial bargaining over the issue. Certainly, the city council about you in deliberation to adopt 32B, Section 16, could be viewed in a way that says that you're not particularly concerned about labor or unions and representing their members as the exclusive bargaining agents for the people that they represent. The city council could find, our school committee could find itself in exactly the same position, adopting and afterwards adopting this position and making a decision later about whether or not the Lynch interpretation, which comes from an attorney outside of Lowell. Okay? And you can't tell me that this is just coincidence, that all of a sudden, after being in bargaining for a number of months, all of a sudden, this sort of loophole that circumvents protective or, or comprehensive bargaining is the right way of doing business. And why would Mr. Lynch put the roadblock up there now from comprehensive contract negotiations that could ultimately save the citizens of Lowell and offer more choice to our members? You know, at the end of the day, does adopting his interpretation get us anywhere except further apart at the negotiating table, increase mistrust between management? And I think you've heard different union leaders express concern about the way you're doing business and municipal employees. Certainly, Copeland and Page would like it. I mean, then you're looking at protracted sort of, you know, litigation that could cost a fortune to the city. Whereas putting it at the bargaining table and seeing this fruition, certainly the city manager, and I'm sure many of you, you are attorneys, and many of you have acted as mayor in the past, are aware that if it ever gets to a point where there's no progress being made at the table, a mediator or a fact finder can declare impasse, in which case Mr. Lynch can impose. So why not follow through with that procedure? All I'm asking you to simply do is follow the procedure that was done for every single city union since 1996, when all previous city managers and city councils were under the impression that 36, excuse me, 32B, Section 16 had been adopted. I think it's a reasonable request. It gives us an opportunity to deal with it at the bargaining table, to assure our members that we've negotiated it thoroughly. I think it gave us greater profitability for the city and potential savings. It also gives us a greater opportunity to get this negotiations done for all the school department unions. So I'd ask for that consideration. I ask that you adopt the earlier model that obviously had been looked at by an attorney or would not have been submitted to you in the early package two weeks ago. And I would like you to instruct, if necessary, advise, get a commitment from, or whatever you may do from Mr. Lynch, that it will be handled properly following 150E and the collective binding laws of the state of Massachusetts. Thank you. Looking for that consideration.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'd like to speak on the issue itself, on an opposition to the union, as a resident. Can I agree with that?
Sure. Sorry, the, the rules are set up in a way to speak in favor and opposition, so we're probably going to record you in opposition. You know five minutes, though, right?
I didn't, I didn't bring my hearing aid with me.
All right, Mr. Hebit, thanks very much for your comments.
Okay, this is very serious for me, okay? Because I was a hospital employee for 26 years. I was the director of maintenance and engineering, and I was very involved in, in the insurances. And the reason for that was is, along with being director of engineering, I also maintained and, and I was head of the operations for all new developments, building additions to the hospitals or hemodialysis units. I built the first hemodialysis unit in the Merameack Valley. I designed and built it myself with our own crew. So I, I just want you to know that I'm not just an old dumb old man getting up here talking for nothing. But I defend the HMOs very, very much. And the reason I do that is I'm, I'm an excellent example of what medicine can do for you, and it costs you money to have it done. One day, just before I retired, I climbed the ladder and went to the top of the building and walked the parapet. That's the outer side of the roof, and I was inspecting the concrete work down below it, and I had a heart attack. So I dropped myself off the wall and crawled back to the lower level of the building, took a breath of fresh air, said I better shut the building down. I was ready to retire then anyways. So I went through the building, and I shut all of the major valves off that could have caused problems after I was gone. I went in, I went along to tell Sister, Sister Thibodeau, my boss, that I was leaving. I was taking a retirement because I had heart problems, and, you know, I couldn't find anyone to identify that. Well, in the meantime, I walked out of the building, split my head wide open, under, hitting the concrete beam in my final inspections, went to the emergency room, had 13 stitches put in my head, and went in and told Sister Thibodeau, I think I'm going to call it quits now. But I had an HMO, and I'll tell you, I've had operations, falling operations. I'm 80 years old, and I can outrun you. I can, I can, I, I'm ashamed of myself, you know? I get out, and I'm a little too active for my age. I get into things you might say the old man should go home and die, but I'm not ready to die. Okay? And as far as union connections, I was in the AFL-CIO during the high years when we built the, the housing projects for the veterans. I was on that project, and I was very involved in the unions and the things that happened in which, and I, I was also a strong union member and tried to organize cotton and roller mills in those same years. So I, I'm just trying to explain something to you. I've been around, but HMOs took care of all the needs that I had. And my wife, who passed on for years with sugar diabetes, took care of all her needs. So if anyone wants to challenge me and tell me that Blue Cross Blue Shield or any other insurance is better than an HMO, you better start looking around. You can get an HMO at a fair price, and I'm not, I love the union guys. I just told you, I was one of them, and I'll always be one of them. I don't always get along with them, but that's okay. So I just want to tell you, if you're looking, if everybody wants to make fair play, we're in real trouble in the city of Lowell, and we all know it. We're in trouble with the arena. We're shot a lot of bucks, and we've got to pick these bucks up somewheres. And we've got to start thinking of giving, probably giving the, the, the arena and the ballpark to the University of Lowell. Push it on them. If you dump it on the state, the state will dump it back on the university. You can bet your life on that. And they could better afford it. See, when, when I listen to this kind of talk, and I hear you say, whoops, we're going to go to an HMO, or this or that, is it going to cost me more money or less? I already pay for all the losses on the arena. I don't go to the arena. I like sports, but I'm, I can't say too old to go, but I don't go to, I don't go to sports anymore. I get sick and tired of it with my own gymnasium. But I just want to tell you, the HMOs, if this, the nine members of this city council fear making the decision, shame on you. You've got to help us, the taxpayers. I'm talking to you as a guy that pays your, your bills. As a taxpayer, look at us, and never mind the greed and saying, we've got to get this because somebody's in this and somebody's getting a handle on this back and forth. I've been all through this with hospitals, too, you know? So I know the back entrances to all of the problems. So I'd like to say to you before saying anything that I may regret, and I think I've already said things I'll regret, but thank you very much for letting me speak up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hebit. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, just come forward and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Donna Janowitz, and I, I live in the city of Lowell. I'm at 139 Durant Street. And I do teach in, in Lowell. And a number of years ago, it was just a few years ago as a matter of fact, at the age of 49, I found that I was in need of open heart surgery very, very, very severely. I had two months to live unless I had it. And I was afraid of it, but I eventually, when I saw how sick I was, I, I didn't have any choice. I had the operation. I did have the operation in Boston, and they told me, they thought I had an HMO at the time, and they told me that what I was going to do was go in at 3:00 in the morning for a 6:00 operation, and I would be discharged two days later. And I had had a number of surgeries before for other things, and I couldn't see that happening. So once they found out that I had So once they found out that I had master medical, they let me go in a day ahead of time, relax. They found, you know, they got my history, everything was fine. I went through the operation. They kept me for eight days. At the end of eight days, I was begging to go home. And when they sent me home, they sent me home with a physical therapist, they sent me home with a nurse, they sent me home with a, you know, a nurse that came in every day, a physical therapist came in every day, and a home health care worker. I live alone. I would not have been able to take care of myself. I would not have been able to drive myself anywhere. I never received a single bill. And through the years, I've had a lot of medical problems, most of them recently. I've had eighteen operations, and I need another one. I've developed lung problems, and I need to be able to pick my own doctors. That's another very big issue. And if I were not, were not able to pick my own doctors, I don't feel that I would have the best. Right now, I do feel that I have the best. Living alone, I'm also a one-income home. I feel like if the insurance ever went out of my, if I was not able to afford the insurance at some point in time, I could lose my home due to these medical, these medical things that are going on with me now. So I really hope that we would be given the chance to bargain for our medical insurance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, that portion of the public, oh, I'm sorry, one more.
My name is Umberto Lattessa. I'm the bargaining agent for the Lowell teachers and Lowell power professionals, and I just want to talk about the focus of where we are. We're not here debating the merits of an HMO, the merits of master medical. There is also another product out there that's called a PPO, and everybody knows that medical insurance is a very vital issue. The teachers and power professionals that I bargain with freely open this issue up at the table, looking for alternatives. All we are asking is that the issue, as it's historically been, it be a bargaining issue. It's something that's been at the table, something that continues to be at the table as we move into fact finding. We have another session scheduled for the end of February in terms of media, with the mediator, hoping to resolve this matter. The issue is, it's an issue that should be bargained. Some of the city contracts contain provisions that have a ratio of what the HMO rate would be to the master medical rate. The issue is trying to protect so that we don't suddenly have for our retirees and for those people who prefer the master medical, an exorbitant rate for the master medical. Historically, what happens is people move because of their circumstances to an HMO. More people are looking to go to a PPO. And those contracts that now exist do in fact have bargain provisions that have a ratio of this rate cannot be this far away from this rate. And that's the courtesy that the teachers and the power professionals are looking for, that when we move into alternative products, we be able to also bargain those parameters that already exist in other contracts. A narrow that says you adopt it and that we suddenly have to eat it is a very narrow interpretation that in fact is going to cause all kinds of litigation. We'd rather be doing this at the table, all right? And we would like to be talking at the table about parameters of protecting the master medical rates vis-à-vis the HMO rates. The union is not opposed to an HMO. All we are asking is that you adapt and look at that this matter belongs to collective bargaining table and ought not be imposed in an anti-labor feeling against the teachers and power professionals that I represent. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mr. Lattessa? Mr. Lattessa, just need your address for the minutes, I'm sorry.
My home address, sir.
Home or business, whichever you.
My business address is thirty-eight Chauncey Street, Boston, Mass. Oh-two-one-one-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Okay, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. It's the wish of the council. Council Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming and participating in the public hearing. As I see it, we have two, it seems like two issues here. And one is whether we need, we have to by law vote for this to put it in place because we're offering it, and we have been for ten years. And in my packet, I don't know if everybody didn't receive the packet that had prior vote, but I got an opinion here from our city solicitor's office that states that we do in fact have to adopt chapter thirty-two B section sixteen in order to offer the HMOs. I know that outside council has been hired, it had been brought up at a prior meeting by another counselor, by motion, but we do have an opinion from our own city solicitor that says that we do have to adopt it. So as customary, I'm gonna go with that opinion. As I see it, it's pretty clear-cut that we have to adopt it. I can understand where the union's coming from. It's difficult, and someone made reference to political issues and political pressure, and there is. But I think that it's a situation that can be a win-win for the city and for everybody. The teachers can be offered a better plan, which I don't think, there's any argument that it's not a better plan. There may be a few, and I'm sure there will be some that we'll select and choose to keep the master medical. But arguably, a much better plan, and it's gonna have great savings to the city. Now, I can understand the union would like to take some of that savings and pass it on to their members in the form of a raise. But to ask us to mandate the manager to sit down and negotiate any terms, I think, is a clear violation of the charter, and I would, through the manager, ask the solicitor for an opinion on that. I don't think we can get involved in that type of discussion even. So if I could maybe ask the solicitor for an opinion on that.
Under section one oh four of our charter, counselor, the duties of the manager spelled out, and clearly this would not fall under those duties that would rest with the council, but instead would rest with the manager. So yes, it would interfere with the charter structure of the manager's duties versus that of the council.
Okay, so I guess that answers my second, what I consider to be the second issue, is to whether we can mandate or ask you or tell you you should be doing this through collective bargaining. The protective language that's been referenced, and also, excuse me, I have some notes, I believe, was parameters in protection, parameters in terms of the percentage differential and the cost and so on. I assume, and I'm not asking you to disclose what's ongoing, I assume that's something that has to be negotiated in the contract anyway. So is it gonna be negotiated anyway?
Items like that would be negotiated. They're in, they are, they do exist in some other contracts, but that would have to be a proposal that we'd have to take a look at. I think it is important to point out that, you know, and I've communicated this to the union people that I've spoken to, to advise them, I tried to bring them up to speed, that this was something that I was bringing forward that needed to be done in order to continue offering HMOs to the city employees that have them. And in fact, the law is very clear that it, you know, once adopted, it shall be made available to all employees of the city. But that, you know, certainly, we're open to continuing to discuss all aspects of this in terms of its implementation and the impact. And we're, you know, we do, as has been pointed out, we have another mediation session coming up on the twenty-sixth, and hopefully, we'll be able to resolve the ongoing contract issues at that time. But this is something that's separate in terms of adopting this and then actually implementing the law.
Okay, so it has to be adopted, and how it's implemented is up to the negotiations.
Well, let me be clear, it's not up to the, the law specifies that it shall apply to all, but we can certainly, we're going to continue to have discussions with the unions in the school department that are represented here tonight on how this, how we proceed to do this.
And there was a nice young lady here this evening talking about the master medical that she prefers. This vote is not in any way gonna pull that off the table, will that still be available as a choice?
It will still be available. It's just a choice. This is a, this is just making an additional option available. If she's comfortable with master medical and wants to stay with that, she can stay with that. Other members that are interested in joining HMOs, the HMO that we offer would have that available to them.
And what effect will this have on retirees?
Really the same, in terms of they can stay with their master medical or they can go to the HMO.
Okay, so it'll open it up for them as well? All right. I mean, to me, it seems like it's pretty clear-cut. We have to vote it to make it, because it shall be made available to everybody. So I think we have to vote for it. And I understand the union's position, Mr. Georges and the other officials here who are here on behalf of their constituents and their members, asking to keep it on the table. But, you know, I think it needs to be, and it was expressed by Mr. Hebert, that we're here on behalf of one hundred and six thousand constituents who are gonna realize a savings in this adoption, and by doing what we should do legally as well. So to me, I don't really see much of an option here, and I'm gonna support the vote.
Thank you. Council Carfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Broderick asked a question I was gonna ask. My good friend Leo Shepherd is here from the retirees and the firefighters, that this will not be negative towards any retiree. I just want to hear that said. First of all, for anyone to imply that this elected body is anti-union is a fallacy. This elected body has supported the unions in this city constantly. We've done it with our voice, we've done it with our vote. If the HMO Blue Health Plan was inferior, I wouldn't be supporting it. But the HMO Health Plan is a good plan. I know because I have it. I know because my wife sees the best doctors in Boston, Mass. General, the best eye surgeons in New England. Anyone with a small family would benefit from an HMO Blue Plan. It's a five-dollar copayment. Let's really get down to the nitty-gritty, and we're not discussing this issue or negotiating this issue or bargaining this issue because the city is in financial trouble. That's a fallacy as well. But if we don't address this issue, this city will turn out like other cities in the Commonwealth into bankruptcy. In the year two thousand, the health insurance for this city was thirteen million dollars a year. In two thousand seven, the cost is twenty-eight million dollars a year. We have to face reality. I want to offer the employees of this city a good health plan. An HMO Blue Health Plan is an excellent plan. It has many advantages over a master medical plan, and master medical has advantages over an HMO Blue Plan. But I wouldn't support anything that would be inferior to any employee in this city. A family with three small children can take those children to the doctor, physicals, so forth and so on, and pay five dollars. That is not the case with a master medical plan. And, Mr. Manager, this is only so that employees can have a choice. That's what it's about. There are many employees who would like to have an HMO Blue Plan. And they're not having that choice. And to be fair with them, I'm gonna support this. Anyone who would come to that microphone and say, the HMO Blue Plan is horrendous, it's horrible, I'm worried about it, don't have any fear. My wife sees the best doctors in New England, in Boston. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to address a few things that have been said. One has to do with what was referred to as an outside, a lawyer from outside the city giving an opinion, as though we've gone out and bought an opinion to say what we wanted to say. That's not true. The law department rendered an opinion saying that this statute, and, you know, it's pretty clear when you read the statute what the intent of the statute is, and it is plain and simply this: if the city is going to offer, or a municipality is going to offer HMOs as part of their health care, in addition to the indemnity plan, then they must adopt this statute. That's it. We've been doing this, as has been stated tonight, for several years. Through oversight, what have you, we didn't adopt the statute. Now, so because this issue has been discussed so continually, I would suspect the manager got a second opinion, just to make certain that we're on solid ground, and that's what's been done. You know, I think it's wise, I think it's prudent, but everybody agrees. This is what the law says, this is how you should proceed, you should adopt this. Because if you don't, we have no business offering HMOs to all those unions on the city side that have already taken advantage of the choice, choice. And so when someone tries to couch this in terms of, are you anti-labor, pro-labor, anti-union, pro-union, well, to that I answer this way. Well, what do we say to all the city side unions who are very concerned and they want us to preserve their choice? They've, you know, what about those families who've already taken advantage of HMOs for now eight or ten years? If we don't adopt this statute, we're gonna tell them, you can't have your HMOs? So this whole discussion has been taken out of context, spun, and the truth is, we want to offer a choice for all the reasons that have been stated here. Financially, it's in the best interest of the city, it's often in the best interest of the employee, if they so choose. That's why we wanted to offer a choice, that's why we've been offering a choice. But how can someone say this is anti-union or anti-labor? That's ridiculous. It's ridiculous to suggest that. I want to protect all those union members who are concerned, and who told me, they wanted, all they were concerned about was that this vote wouldn't affect their ability because they were in an HMO and they wanted to stay there. The other issue, I think, has to do with the misconceptions, and I just want to address it again, because I guess it can't be said enough. I thought we made it clear the first night it came to the floor, but I read emails that were blitzed in the recent days, it came on the desk tonight, and by and large, they all have this misconception that if they have master medical and we pass, we adopt this legislation, then they no longer are eligible for master medical. That is not true. If they want to stay with master medical, they can stay with master medical. So, you know, this has been blown out of proportion, taken out of context. You know, we've had the public hearing. I certainly am going to support adopting this statute, not only to protect and to be doing what the law says we're supposed to do, but to protect those people who want to continue with HMOs and to open the option up to other employees if they so desire. As for the issue of collective bargaining and the issue going on with the school committee, let me just say this. It's the first time I've heard anyone ask us to direct a manager how to bargain at the bargaining table. You know, I could say, why don't we direct the manager to offer nothing more than zero percent raise for three years? And I'm sure the union wouldn't be supportive of that kind of direction from the city council. So it's illegal, in my understanding, under the statute, as well as under the charter, for us to interfere with the bargaining, which is, as far as our representative. Furthermore, this is the school committee's negotiations. These are not the city council negotiations. And so we have a representative in the mayor, and the manager partakes in that negotiating team. But we would be so far out of line to be ordering how to proceed. The language that's been talked about, I think the concern is real in terms of, or it's not unfounded to say, you know, the it's not unfounded to say, you know, the percentage between the two plans, if they're both offered, that they're not exceed a certain percentage, be that 20%, be that 22%, and so forth. That language can be addressed, and I can understand that being of interest to the parties. And the reason being, you don't want one plan, i.e. the master medical, to become so expensive that the people who want to be in it can no longer be in it. But that has nothing, nothing, to do with the vote here tonight. So I intend to support this, and I think, you know, we should get the matter cleared and the record cleared once and for all.
Thank you. Counselor Armin Mercier?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There are actually two issues here. One is adopting 32B Section 16, which I don't think any member of this council is opposed to, because we need to do that. The only way you can offer HMOs as a criteria for health benefits is by adopting this. Should have been adopted a long time ago, it hasn't been. The question I have, however, is that when we were given a vote a couple of weeks ago about adopting this, there were statements in that vote that talked about through collective bargaining, second paragraph, whereas Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 32B Section 16, provides for the offer to employees through collective bargaining. And then the final paragraph said, "The city of Lowell acting through a city council hereby accepts the provision of Massachusetts General laws," and so forth, "basis through collective bargaining." Is that what's before us tonight, or has that been changed? What is the vote before us tonight?
The vote before you tonight, Counselor, is the version that you received that night that, with those words stricken.
Which, these words are stricken from it.
That's correct.
Can we have a next?
It's not in the, the solicitor can speak to this issue, but those, that language is not appropriate within the context of this statute.
How did that find itself in a vote for us to consider?
It was the initial draft that, and again, the solicitor can address that specific question better than I.
I would like to know why we presented with a vote, and then it was changed to eliminate the collective bargaining section of that vote.
It was changed, Counselor, really to clarify and to correct the vote, so that the vote that you're acting upon tonight, or in another, at another meeting, will be accurate. The reason that that language was unfortunately in there was, in an original draft, there had been a lot of language to this vote, which was an attempt to explain to the council the history that had gone on and the fact that we already have collective bargaining agreements that have this language in. And that we, if we didn't pass this, we now have collective bargaining agreements in which we would not be able to continue with an HMO offering, yet it's already in our current collective bargaining agreements. That's my understanding of, in terms of the intent, as to why it was originally in that vote. But as far as the narrow issue, and the way it was being interpreted by Mr. Georges to, and brought that to the attention of the city manager, who spoke to me, we looked at it. As far as the narrow issue, is it through collective bargaining that you adopt 32B? Again, the answer to that is no.
So someone made you aware that that first draft was not a proper draft?
Well, not necessarily. Again, the original draft was not necessarily intending to mean that 32B had to be accepted through collective bargaining. That's why it was in a vote.
But it came to us as a vote to be taken and then changed. I just want to know-
Correct. And what I'm trying to explain is that the vote and the intention behind that language was not to suggest that it had to be done through collective bargaining. And my last point, my previous point to that was, as further evidence of that, is the fact that there was a vote actually in front of you to adopt 32B. But anyway, it's my understanding that when that was originally drafted, the only reason that the language was put in there was an attempt to reflect the fact that we do have these existing collective bargaining agreements that we would want to be able to live up to. And the only way to do that is through this adoption of 32B. As far as the narrow issue, in terms of whether 32B requires the collective bargaining, it's the position of the Law Department that it doesn't.
You, in February, you issued an opinion, and the second paragraph says, "Since approximately 1996, the city of Lowell has been offering employees optional insurance for services with healthcare organizations," i.e., I'm sure, HMO. "As a result, several employees have exercised the option to retain the services of a healthcare organization and continue to do so presently." Is that my understanding that all of these were done through collective bargaining? Back mechanism? Or where the employees just contacted and said, "You want an HMO, it's available to you?"
It's my understanding that historically, there might have been, there was collective bargaining that took place, and that's how it resulted. Although I have to caution you in the sense that, you know, having not been a part of it, I don't know that for sure. But clearly, it is reflected in some of our existing collective bargaining agreements.
I guess my question then would be to you, Mr. Manager. I have one question, because it's a pet peeve of mine. You did get an opinion from Copelman and Page regarding tonight's meeting and all that. Now, is that part of the $20,000, or is there an extra cost?
It's part of the $20,000.
Part of the $20,000, okay. I just want to make sure there are no extra costs beyond that. If indeed, it's my understanding that the offer, and I absolutely agree, we need to adopt this, I think HMOs should be offered to people who work for the city, and I think it should be their prerogative whether or not to take that as opposed to staying with GIC. But if it has worked, offering it through the collective bargaining process with all the other unions, why are we departing now, or are we departing from that process? Because there are two issues. One, we're going to adopt this HMO. But I think the implementation of this adoption is, I think, the bone of contention. The unions are claiming or suggesting that the implementation should be through collective bargaining. But I take it, it's not your position that it should be done that way, or do you intend to bring it to the collective bargaining table?
Counselor, I think the best way I could state my position on that is that I wasn't here for those other collective bargaining sessions in which the HMOs were discussed with other unions within the city. Generally, and I've talked to a number of communities across the Commonwealth regarding this issue, because I, it seemed odd to me at the time when I came on board that, you know, there was a union that we offered an HMO, but there were unions that did not have the ability to utilize those, because I was familiar with the statute. And so I did inquire with a number of communities, different people in the municipal profession, legal, you know, legal advice, free legal advice, that this is really unheard of, that you would go through this process. Because once you decide that you're going to offer an HMO, and you may have, what stimulates that, what prompts that in a community varies from community to community, whether it's the city or town, or whether it's the unions, or whatever the case may be. You know, the step is, you adopt Chapter 32B, Section 16, that's the first step, and then you make that available. And maybe there's some discussion that goes on at the bargaining table with how that proceeds. But it's really, in this case of the city of Lowell, it seems that the cart was put before the horse, that we were offering, we were offering it and working how it was going to be offered within collective bargaining agreements and any limitations before we ever took the appropriate action to adopt the statute. So my position is that the statute, if we're going to offer an HMO to anyone, and we are, we have to adopt this statute. Once you accept the statute, then it's clear that it has to be offered to everyone. Any parameters around all of that, you know, the union certainly has the ability to come forward and make a proposal as to how that might take place. I have, as I said earlier, advised the unions that are not covering, not currently being offered, the HMOs, that we're going to put them on notice and express our willingness and interest in sitting down to, you know, answering any questions and discuss any impact that this is going to have upon them. And simultaneous to that, coincidentally, we're involved in negotiations where, you know, we can, you know, trying to flush some of this out as well. But, you know, we'll be moving forward, assuming that it's approved tonight, which it really has to be if we're going to continue offering it to the other unions and other employees. Assuming that, then we're going to move forward to fully enforce the law.
Well, first of all, there's no doubt in my mind it will be approved tonight, it needs to be approved tonight. I mean, it's a vote that's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned. And although I agree with Counselor Eileen Donahue that we can't tell you how and what to negotiate, I would just suggest that you evaluate the ramifications of not discussing with the unions this possibility in terms of future labor, labor boards' relations. I mean, the minute this leaves Lowell and it goes to one of those boards, it may cost us a lot more money than sitting down and negotiating it. My suggestion is, just don't leave that as a possibility not to be pursued.
We're always, as I said earlier, we're always willing to discuss all of these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Rita Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It almost seems like we should have two votes before us, one to adopt 32B, which seems to be a given, and secondly, to see if we can offer it up as a bargaining tool. But I know as well that I don't bargain with the contracts you do and the manager, mayor does, as well as TJ takes your place at times. So I know that this is something that we really couldn't do in violation probably of the law. But to me, this vote is just an acceptance of a statute, and once we vote in the affirmative, we can be able to allow to offer HMO across the board. This vote in no way takes anything away from anyone. If a person has master medical, they can still keep it, and that's my understanding. And I know there were talk about the retirees, they were nervous about that. So no one is taking anything away from you by our vote. If someone chooses to go from master medical to an HMO, they can switch back again if they feel that it didn't suit their needs, and they may switch back during open enrollment time, like I think it's usually once a year, probably in May. So they might wait a year, but they can always switch and go back, and I want you to know that. It isn't set in stone that once you switch from your master medical, you lost it, you're at a HMO and you're stuck there. You're not. So I wanted to make that very clearly. But in my opinion, and I know it's probably not about HMOs, but it's about the perception, perception here is the key. HMOs are perceived to not be the best, but I beg to differ. I have an HMO, I have Tufts under my husband's insurance, and I respect what it has done for me, it works for me. I had a triple hernia operation some months ago, and it did all right for me, and it wasn't very expensive at all, considering I had that HMO. So I feel that I just don't want to offer HMOs and let it go at that with this vote. I want full disclosure, I want a thorough explanation of what HMOs are all about, their value, their cost savings to the city and to the subscriber, so that they clearly know how worthwhile HMOs truly are. Having said that, my main question would be, and I know there's no dispute as to HMOs, people probably think that, you know, it's not about that, maybe this vote is not about that, it probably isn't, but it's a bargaining tool, and that's what the unions are coming here for. So my main question, which Counselor Mercier already asked, was this option that was, was it offered to Local 1705 or the other unions as a bargaining tool? I don't know. That was just my question, and I wanted to know that, because what's most important with the issue here is communication with unions is the key. That's key. Communication and forthrightness. So I think if the option is offered to one union, it should be offered to all. People need prior notice of your intentions, Mr. Manager. Sometimes we don't know your intentions till it's sitting right on the table. So I'm only asking for a matter of fairness. I don't think there's anybody sitting at these tables that is not supporting the union. Having said that, it's like, which child do you like the best? Because I respect the unions. My husband was a union president of Local 39, the Painters Local, for 21 years. If it wasn't for the unions, I wouldn't be owning a home today. I honestly know I wouldn't be. So I do respect them. But on the other hand, we have to weigh all options, and there's times when you say to your children, not that I'm trying to say they're children, "But I can't afford what you're looking for." Maybe we can negotiate and offer it as an option, but I got to look at the overall picture. Things are very expensive now, so not only are we trying to save and watch our pocketbooks, I'm going to be very frugal, and I know that it's a shame to be saying it to the unions that I, the people I care about the most, but we got to watch our dollars. We have to watch our dollars. And if we can tell you the value of an HMO and help you save for your copayment, which would be more reasonable with an HMO, we're trying to help you and help the people that pay the other 75%. So it's like, we're trying to balance here and trying to be fair, and that's all I'm asking for you to do, Mr. Manager. Be forthright and try to, you know, notify them of your intentions and see if we can probably offer things as a bargaining tool. I'm not telling, I mean, I probably shouldn't even tell you what to do, but I can't say that we should vote on that, because it's not in our, on our watch. But go ahead, Mr.-
Mr. Manager?
Counselor, just, again, in response, we're certainly willing to sit down and discuss this issue with the union as we move forward to implement the law. That was my intention, to keep those lines of communication open when I contacted each of the union presidents before the last city council. Certainly, this is something that could have been brought to the city council without ever notifying anyone, but that wouldn't have been appropriate, that wouldn't have been forthcoming, as you've stated. And I wanted to make sure that they knew what was happening, so that everything was out in the open, and our intention was, my intention was very clear. As to whether, you know, what happened with other contracts, again, I wasn't here at those contracts, I'm not sure, I don't know the role the solicitor played in those negotiations that took place, I'm not sure who proposed the HMOs. I will tell you that in many communities, most communities that I'm aware of, it was the unions that have come forward and proposed the HMOs as a cost-saving measure back in the 1980s. Lowell seems to have been a little late in coming to the HMO area, when it didn't seem to happen until 1996. I'm not sure who brought it forward. But I do know that it generally goes with the union support as well as management support in trying to do that. But I can't stress enough that we're trying to be very open and cooperative with the unions on this, and, you know, I'm anxious to sit down and discuss the implementation of it and what impact they see, and try to address all that. But I think the points that you make, that this is just an option. We're not, you know, a statement was made earlier tonight regarding my role in this is trying to put up a roadblock, just the opposite. I'm trying to unblock the road here to allow the employees throughout the entire city to take advantage of the HMO if they so choose. And, you know, and that's what the law provides, and that's all I'm trying to do, is abide by the law of the Commonwealth.
Counselor Melonozzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, actually, for two reasons. One, a lot of what I was actually going to say has been said, and secondly, I'm actually married to a schoolteacher, so I want to be very careful here as I go down this road. But again, it's been stated that we need to adopt Chapter 32B, Section 16, and it looks like we're going to do that this evening. I guess what I'd like to do in front of a question to the solicitor as a follow-up to Counselor Armin Mercier, is the issue of past practice. Since you were here during those times, if we get to a point, and I certainly hope we don't, if we ever get to a point where we are in litigation, how heavily viewed, if you will, will the issue of past practice be as we go down the road with the unions?
Well, again, I think that some of them probably have been the subject of collective bargaining, others have not. I don't know that there's actually, you know, a defined past practice. But as far as, again, the narrow issue under 32B, in whether collective bargaining is required, I think clearly it's not. And I wasn't part of it, I, again, I don't know how that came about. I had spoken briefly to Kathy Tierney about it, and unfortunately, I just don't have the history of it, and nor did a couple of the people that I spoke to in the Law Department in terms of how this thing unfolded as it did. But clearly, under 32B, there is no requirement for collective bargaining, and I don't believe that there is a past practice as well. The, again, the concern from the Law Department was really the opposite. Because some of these changes have been incorporated into collective bargaining agreements, and because obviously we want to be able to stand behind those agreements, in order to do that legally, we needed to adopt, and we need to adopt, 32B, which the council seems very well aware of as well. seems very well aware of as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. I've just been informed by Mr. Georges that all of the unions negotiated the HMO thing, that there wasn't one without the others. I don't know if that's so, but he contacted them all, and the option of HMO accepting it was negotiated with all the unions. That's just for clarification.
Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the law is very clear, and unfortunately, that bus has already left the station. We didn't adopt, I wasn't here. The law was not adopted. And it has been mentioned earlier, and I do want to mention it as well. If we don't adopt the law, we're not in compliance, because all the other HMO, all the other employees are apparently in violation. So I agree, this, I'm not sure what the discussion is, other than, yes, it's a bargaining chip, something that Mr. Georges has talked about, and it's, he mentioned it's on the table tonight, or it has been on the table. I can recall discussions many years ago in finance subcommittee meetings, and the issue has never been on the table, and it's not because the city has not asked to discuss it or to have it as a bargaining issue. It's just never been put on the table because that was not Mr. Georges' desire. It is a very, it's a cost issue, and we hired this manager because we have some serious issues in the city financially. And it's not just one issue of the arena or the ballpark. Health insurance is a huge budget buster, not just for the city law, but for every single community in the Commonwealth and in the nation. Businesses are affected by health insurance. It's a major issue confronting all organizations. And I think the most important, because I get emails all day as well, the most important message that I got from the emails and from the people that are concerned is really the misinformation that has been out for, I'd say, 10 days or two weeks, and it's been mentioned repeatedly here tonight by, I will say, almost every member, that we are trying to take something away, and that would be grounds for an unfair labor practice. And that's not what we are doing at all whatsoever. It's been offered since 1996. There's about a 60-40 split for the city employees that have it and that have taken advantage of it. Maybe the numbers have changed. I don't know, Mr. Georges. But what I do know is that we have to take some steps in this city and give an option, which is offering an option, because if we don't, the city is going to go bankrupt. And, you know, taxpayers deserve relief as well, and the teachers, some teachers are taxpayers as well. So let's not forget that. And I don't think that this council is anti-union at all whatsoever. We have a job to do, and it's to balance the interest of providing services with benefits to those employees, and I think that the city has been very good. But I also think that taxpayers need relief, and this is just one way of trying to achieve both. Allow those union teachers and custodians and other members to continue to have that option. But I can tell you, I've been approached by a number of employees that would like to have that option. They don't want to have to pay that high premium. They don't need the family plan because, for Master Medical. And I was approached in the last 10 days by a number of custodians and teachers saying, why are you trying to take this away? And I think that's probably the worst falsehood that has been presented. And I don't know who it is, but it is out there. And we have all tried to make it clear that that is not the case. It's an option. It was, and it's a savings message, yes. Why does the savings have to be a bargaining chip? We're supposed to be in this together. I think we've been good to all unions, and some have given up during the difficult times. And way back when, yes, there wasn't parity, because I remember sitting at finance subcommittee meetings. There isn't parity with teachers in Lowell versus some of the other communities. In '99, a Step 10 teacher was making $49.5. Today, that teacher's making $62.5. And that, our teachers are some of the best-paid teachers in the state, and it's not an easy job, let's face it. But I think the city has lived up to its end of the bargain. We're trying to do the best that we can and still provide other services, a police, a fire, our streets, our sidewalks, snow removal. And there is only so many, so much that we can go to the taxpayers for, and we have to keep that in mind. So I understand it's not easy. I understand by adopting this that a major bargaining chip has been lost by, or is not there for Mr. Georges, but, you know, the horse left the barn. We can't do anything about it. We have to adopt it and try to move on. I don't think that means that we're not going to continue to bargain in good faith for, essentially, it's money for the raise issue that's on the table. So I'm going to support this. It's not about anti-union, but it's about trying to be balancing all the interests that we have and to give, again, relief to taxpayers, because they just took it on the chin, and this is going to help.
Thank you. Under Council Rule 28, I think it is, when adopting legislation enacted by the legislature and we have a local option to adopt or not, we're required to hold a public hearing one week in advance of any vote. That's our own local rule. If the wish of the council was to vote on this tonight, we would need to suspend that rule. Counsel Donahue?
Mr. Manager, I would move to suspend the rule. This has been, obviously, widely publicized, widely debated. It is our own rule, and we certainly can make a motion to suspend it. One of my concerns is, I want to, if we're offering HMOs without the proper statute having been adopted, I want to shorten that time. I don't see why we should be in violation of that requirement under master general laws any longer than necessary, so.
Second the motion.
All right. So motion to suspend our local rule in order to consider this vote tonight by Counselor Donahue, seconded by Counselor Caulfield. Is there a request for a roll call on that motion?
Roll call.
We need, a roll call, please.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Armin Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Ramirez?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Eight A's, one N.
Okay. Eight A's, the rules are suspended. What's the wish of the council?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Caulfield. Roll call.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Armin Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Ramirez?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Eight A's, one N.
Okay. Eight A's, the legislation is adopted. We have a second public hearing, a petition by Drake Petroleum, 378 Gorham Street, appealing the denial of a curb cut in excess of 32 feet. Sorry. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this matter, please come forward, give us your name and address for the minutes, please.
For the record, my name is Ron Fortune of Lee Mass. I represented Drake Petroleum for the increased storage and self-serve license on this particular application, redevelopment for this site. I have a packet that I'd like to hand out. It just goes into the past approvals.
While these materials are being distributed, I should just point out to the council that when there's a curb cut request in excess of 32 feet by ordinance, that matter is required to come to this council. It's required to be denied by the building inspector and appealed here, and that's the procedure that's placed this matter on the agenda this evening.
Basically, this location is at Elm Street and Auburn Street. We are tearing, Drake Petroleum is tearing down the entire site, and right now, it was a used car and then a repair facility. It'll be just a small convenience store with a building placed to the rear and three dispensers up in front under a new canopy. We have planning approval, ZBA approval. This was our last element for our tanker truck to get in and service the facility properly. This was a design that had gotten approval through the engineering department and fire department, all aspects of the city, I believe, are met except for this last component. Again, the opening on Elm Street is where our tanker comes in, and then the Auburn Street exit, again, it allows for free flow for the dispenser. In your packet, there's a plan toward the rear of the packet that actually shows the actual layout. Okay, if there's, and again, there's a, in the packet, there's a little view of what the facility will end up looking like when it's completed. But again, everyone agrees that this travel pattern is what's needed for this facility to function in the manner that it's, and this was, it's a tough site with three individual streets on it.
Okay. And I noticed in your packet, there is approval from the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this matter? Okay, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council just received this information this evening, and reading why the curb cut was denied, it said, signed by Ed Walsh, "No application for lowering or removing of curbing or edge stone for more than a distance of 32 feet for each entrance to the premises involved shall be approved." So I'd like to refer this to the manager or to the subcommittee to thoroughly look at this.
You can't. Thank you.
Okay. That's a motion to refer the manager to the manager. Any second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. Counselor Donahue?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Donahue. On the motion, Counselor Rita Mercia?
Well, it's my understanding for the past 12 years that I've been here that if it's over 32 feet, then it comes back before the council. I don't know what's so hard to understand about that. My only question would have been, how, what is the length of the curb, curb cut that you need?
For the tanker travel pattern on the, which, again, engineering has gone through and reviewed and basically approved our, our design was, it's, it is a 43-foot opening on Elm Street, again, and it is separated in midpoint by a rubble strip, and then along Auburn Street, there are basically three openings, and they are 24 with a rubble strip, 22, and 31. It gives a total of 86. But this, again, allows free flow of our transporter as well as our customer base.
When you went before the planning board, as you did, were there any butters to this that were in opposition at all?
No, this, again, it had planning approval. I went through the planning process. It had all the agency approvals at that time. Again, this is a procedural component, and I, it was my understanding that planning had directed a memo earlier to everyone. And I apologize for just getting this to, this packet to this board.
It would have been nice if we would have got it Friday, so we would have had a weekend or whatever to look at it. But, but, Mr. Mayor, the reason I'm bringing this up is, this is something that has to come before us if it's over 32 feet. It's got approval from the planning board. I don't know why, I don't know what, you want to look into it further. I don't understand. No neighbors opposed it, from what I'm understanding, and I don't have anything to gain here, but I don't know what the...
32 feet, that's the width of 495. I mean, why do you need something even longer than that?
The site is narrow, and for the, for a layout to work in the manner for this facility, planning reviewed several schemes, and this was the scheme that was best suited for this location, just in, because of its configuration. And they didn't want any openings on Gorham Street.
Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. We may have gotten a memo. I don't recall seeing it. I mean, the, you know, this may be a good plan, but, you know, when we're hand, ordinarily, when something comes on for a public hearing, we have time to review and study the materials. We're handed a fairly substantial packet. I have no idea if the neighborhood is aware that this is on for a public, I mean, it was noticed as a public hearing, but I didn't have a lot of information. You know, I support Counselor Caulfield's motion, just to give us time to look at it and study it. I mean, if it's a good deal, it's a good deal. But this is a very congested area, and I just want to look at it, that's all. So, I mean, there's a reason that it comes to the council because of the exception, so that, you know, planning may like it, and, you know, ZBA may like it, but, you know, there may be something that the council, there's a reason why we have to weigh in on this. So I don't want to weigh in on something I know nothing about. And when I just see this here tonight, that's, that's why I'm either refer it to the manager or delay it for a week so that we can look at it and have, make an, that's my view of it.
It's really not being fair to you or fair to us to receive this five minutes ago and to make a decision on it. It's not being fair. And I think if the manager addressed this and come back with a report, I will do that.
Counselor Elliott?
Can I ask, can I ask you some questions? So you presented a proposal to the planning board, correct?
That's correct.
When did you do that, approximately?
After, after, you know, the several meetings, I received an approval is dated, let's see, planning approval dated 6/14/06.
So June of this year, this was before the planning board?
Of last year, right.
Of last, of last year, excuse me. And then you went to the zoning board?
Then I went to ZBA, and after site meetings with engineering, the entire agencies, on 11/13/06, I received approval from ZBA. And at that point, it was concluded that, oh, with the layout that you have, there is a restriction in the city, a city statute, that you need relief with your curb cuts at the, at the manner that's shown.
Okay.
And we had fire department, we needed the transport distancing because of the streets, again, the layout that planning had wanted, and they just...
So planning didn't want an opening on Gorham Street, which I think is a good idea?
That's correct.
Because it is congested, and we don't, and this is going to prohibit a lot of traffic going in, traffic going out at that particular intersection.
Right.
So as a compromise, to have the opening on Elm Street would increase the width. Presumably, you could have an opening on Gorham Street and an opening on Elm Street, but the planning board and...
Right, this was where they had...
Didn't think that was a good idea. What is currently on that site, sir?
There's a little Sunoco...
Okay, so it is...
...filling station that has a repair facility with used cars parked out.
And cars can go in and out on Gorham Street, on Gorham Street, which...
It's my understanding a part of Gorham Street.
Okay. So because there is an ordinance that says 31 feet, you're required to do this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because my design exceeds that distance.
Mr. Clark, who goes, when an advertisement is placed, does it go through your office for public hearing? So we, I think the concern is, I don't have a problem with this. It seems like you've, you're not doing this overnight. You started in probably May of last year. You get the appropriate approvals from the zoning board and the planning board, and it's only before us because of an ordinance, and it's, it is, it's an important ordinance that...
Right.
Prevents, you know, a curb cut drop for more than 31 feet because it's, you know, it's a safety hazard. But, Mr. Manager, were you aware of this as the planning and development? Well, I guess they, you know, they would weigh in at the planning board stage, so I'm not sure what we're going to look to get from you, other than this is what took place, and the approvals are in place, right?
Mr. Manager?
Planning and development is in favor, is in favor of this, as has been indicated. The planning board and ZBA have both voted for this. I apologize that this information came to you just tonight, but it is seen as being an improvement over the existing conditions out at that area as well. But, you know, I'd be happy to get to you, if the council so votes, I'd be happy to get you additional information, perhaps some, you know, information... to get you additional information, perhaps some, you know, information about the current conditions out there, and obviously, you can see those for yourself. But we do have a recommendation from DPD that they, that this be approved.
Okay, and, and I understand the point. We just got this. It comes before us. We don't want to, you know, do something that, without knowing all of the particulars, especially when we're looking at zoning, zoning issues. So, you've answered all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Milonazzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, to, to the petitioner, on the finding of fact from the zoning board of appeals, it states, item number four, deliveries must be made between the hours of ten PM and five AM. Is, is that what they intended, that they would be made at night? That's what they intended? And again, the only reason I'm asking is because it is, it is a congested residential neighborhood, and I just...
Right, so we, we agreed to several conditions. It's just that with the transport travel, we do need these openings to get in, and you don't want us dropping, you know, in the street, and that liability.
Okay.
Must be on the, on our site.
Okay.
And we had to work with the fire department on even the, how the offload would be for our site.
Okay, and you're talking about the offload being the gasoline? Is that what you're talking about, the deliveries?
Yes.
Yes, the gasoline, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, the motion on the floor is to delay action for one week pending a report from the city manager. Request for roll call on that motion. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Any opposed? The matter, public hearing is closed, and the matter will be acted on at next week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, brings us to the city manager's portion of the agenda. First item there, our communications from the manager, responses to various council motions and requests. Any questions or comments concerning those communications? Motion, Mr. Manager?
Just if I, if I may, there are two additional communications that we provided to the council tonight. One was a legal opinion from Attorney Fenton regarding the questions that were raised last week regarding the procedures to be used by LTC, working with LTC and setting up procedures on their, some of their programming. So, that's one piece of correspondence, a communication that we provided to the council tonight. The other is a, a letter from me with, that is transmitting the budget instructions that I provided to the departments recently on preparation of the fiscal year oh eight budget. And I just wanted to, you to have a copy of this. I think that this is something that's a little new for some of the departments, and I'm not sure if the, and I, and I don't think the council has seen this type of document in the past as well, that basically lays out what we're, will be expecting from the departments in terms of the preparation of their budgets. We will be looking for much more information this year than has previously been presented, and will be, in turn, developing a budget document, as I've indicated on numerous occasions, that would be much more informative than other documents, budget documents that the city has ever produced. So, I think that you'll find that very helpful as we move forward. The other part of the budget instructions are a budget timeline. It's our intention, as I indicated, that we will be presenting, getting this budget to you earlier than the city council has typically received this. It's our goal to have this in your hands by the beginning to the middle of May, so that we can move forward in a more timely fashion. I think that will be helpful to all as we go through the review, because it will be, and this is the third point, it will be a difficult fiscal year. I think all of us have, have commented on this at various times, including tonight, that we have some very difficult issues ahead of us. We're losing about three and a half million dollars in school building assistance money that we, that came as somewhat of a surprise to us. We just recently completed a lengthy discussion here tonight on health insurance, but that's a serious problem for us as well, even more so than I think any of us thought, because in fact, our health insurance trust funds have been depleted over the last several years, because we haven't adequately adjusted the premiums to reflect the true costs of healthcare to our employees. So, we need to do something about that. Again, we're, we're caught in a situation where there is now legislation that's been approved by the state that requires us to fully fund all of these trust funds, our health insurance trust funds. That's, it's a little bit different. Communities in the past had more flexibility, but the laws have changed on that, and we have to abide by those. So, we're going to have to have some more dramatic increases in our health insurance budget than we have over the last, I believe, three to four years, where we were holding those premium costs below what the actual costs were, and instead utilizing those trust funds. The other issue is our reserve funds, our stabilization fund, that, that was a topic of discussion this past fall, as we looked at how to balance the FYO seven budget. Upon review and working with the Department of Revenue, it appears that, I know we were operating under the assumption that we only had to have two and a half million dollars in that fund. In fact, the legislation that was passed in the early nineteen nineties to put us under the oversight board requires that that amount be increased each year. And right now, we're about forty thousand dollars below what that's supposed to be. And so, next year, it's going to have to be increased above that. So, we do have some real challenges ahead of us in fiscal year oh eight. It's my goal to hold those taxes down to a more reasonable level. I think the, the increase that we were forced to move forward with this year is very unfortunate, but given the fact that we were into the fiscal year and the revenues that, you know, were assumed to be there, were in fact not there, that we didn't have any choice if we were to continue to maintain services. Likewise, in fiscal year oh eight, we, if we want to maintain services, we have to find a way to do that in the, in the most effective way. And it's my goal that the budget document that's presented to you will outline all of that, and we will be able to live within the revenues that are available to us without putting additional burden on our taxpayers. But I did, I did want you to have this in your hands. It does outline that, to the departments, that we are looking at some cutbacks. We are looking at, you know, it's certainly possible that the employee count may go down as a result of the fiscal conditions that we face. And, you know, we, we're trying to hold the line on taxes because of our concerns about that. So, that's all in there, and of course, this will become much more clear as we move forward. Along those lines, we are hoping to present a, the fiscal forecast for fiscal year oh eight, as well as the next, the full five-year fiscal forecast that we've been working on, to give you some picture of where we, we see the city heading over the next five years. And we hope to do that in March, and I, I'm not sure whether we, I suppose we should probably bring that as a communication to the entire council, or perhaps put it in the form of a presentation that would come to the entire council or the fiscal, you know, subcommittee. So, I'll, I guess I'll work with the mayor in determining the appropriate means to do that.
Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just did get a chance to read this tonight, Mr. Manager, and I appreciate the fact that you're laying out the process well in advance. I, I do like the timeline. I like the guidelines that, that are being presented. I think you're giving department heads the, the parameters to work within. And I, I look forward to the budget, but it seems to make sense that, you know, department heads are expected to, you know, justify those line items versus, I think, on cases, we sit here, you know, hour after hour, which is okay, but, you know, why are these line items here year after year where they may have outlived their use? So, maybe changing the budget around and, you know, having the managers manage those budgets for the resources that they need will make some sense, and, and I think it's good to lay it right out there, right at the beginning. These are the big picture items that we have to deal with, and we're going to be, you know, forced to make some choices, because taxes are, you know, are not an option. So, it's good to have this document up front. I'll look forward to coming, having subcommittee meetings to, you know, to stay on top of this, and we won't be working against that, you know, June thirtieth deadline. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you. Through you to the manager, you, there's a note or an indication in here about the stabilization fund?
Yes.
It should have been increased every year?
Yes.
And is that going forward as well?
Yes.
Do we know what the formula is? How much is it going to cost us every year?
It's really in proportion to...
Right. It's in proportion to the overall budget of the, of the city, and I, and I don't have the legislation right in front of me. We're roughly forty thousand dollars below where we should be right now.
Okay, and that's, we were thinking of, well, there was some talk of transferring money out of that to...
Right.
To help with the budget? Okay, good thing we didn't. Thank you.
And I, I, you may, moving forward, I think that, I would think that the, the state would be reluctant to make any changes in that at this point in time, but certainly would be my goal that as we move forward, that we, once we get the city back on very sound financial footing, that we'll be able to perhaps look at that as some, talk to our delegation about, perhaps modifying that.
I think the ought to have some clarification on that point.
Basically, what it is, is one point five percent of the prior year's total amount to be raised. So, it's a calculated amount on your prior year's levy.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, what is in the stabilization account as we speak? I believe it was four point two million?
Yes, that's roughly it.
And could you forward that, that legislation to the council that you just talked about? Please, thank you.
Counselor Ahmene Mercier?
I just have a question about the statement you made about employee count to be down. Is that a code word for layoffs?
It's a, it's a code word for less employees.
Okay.
Whether that's layoffs, attrition, positions not being filled...
Yeah, I, I think the best way to achieve that is not to fill positions, as opposed to laying people off.
That would be my preference.
Okay.
But, but again, I, I think what you run into there is, I couldn't agree with you more, but one of the things you run into is, there are certain positions that you have no choice but to fill, and certain positions that if you, you fill them, there are cost, there are savings that result from that being filled, if you are achieving more efficiencies as a result of that.
Or taking longer to fill them is also a savings.
There are certainly, there are a variety of different things that can be done, but...
I would hope that you look at all of the aspects, short of putting somebody out of work.
There's nothing I dislike more than having to tell someone that they've lost their job.
Thank you.
Counselor Donahue?
Mr. Manager, start cost saving by turning the heat off in here this...
Yeah. Started last week.
Counselor Rita Mercier?
And I hope that the cuts aren't in the treasurer's office. They're down to begin with, so God almighty.
Exactly. And that's, that's a great example of where it doesn't make sense to make, if those positions are vacant, it makes more sense to fill those positions to make sure that money's being processed efficiently and properly. In the law department, too.
Can you, who's speaking here?
You are.
I know where Mercy is, but we're two different people. I know people think we're twins, but anyways, we need a good laugh. I'm so cold, Mr. Manager. You can't believe it. I almost got some water, hot water, to put my feet in. It's so cold. But anyways, I hope, I wanted to know how we're cross-training in the city hall. Are we cross-training people in the department?
That's, that's something we've, have spent some time about, particularly in our financial departments, that we are working to, to check on all of their skill set and making sure that they are cross-trained. Again, there's, there's efficiencies that can be realized that. I think that's a great, a great point that you bring out.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's plenty warm up here, but maybe the, the hot air's blowing this way.
Mr. Mayor, just quickly, if I could, will the FYO eight budget be put on the web page?
It, it will be put on the webpage once it's, once it's completed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, a motion to accept the reports of the manager by Counselor Milonazzo, seconded by Counselor Broderick. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the reports are accepted. Next item is a constable bond for Curtis Freeman, twenty-one London Street. A motion to approve by Counselor Broderick, seconded by Counselor Rita Mercier. Roll call, please. Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Ahmene Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Ramirez?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Eight a's, one absent. Eight a's, the matter's approved. The next item is a request for out-of-state travel from the city manager, the mayor, and councilors. Attached is a request from Frank Singleton, health director, to attend Public Health Preparedness Summit being held in Washington DC, February nineteen through twenty-three. Funds for this travel request come from a CDC bioterrorism and influenza public health grant, and will not be charged to the city. Very truly yours, Bernard Flinch, city manager.
Approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Ahmene Mercier, seconded by Counselor Rita Mercier. Roll call. Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Ahmene Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Ramirez?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Eight a's, one absent. Okay, the next item concerns a party I have done legal work for. I'm going to recuse myself. Counselor Milonazzo will assume the chair.
Thank you. A vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to enter into a lease agreement with Fortune Wakefield LLC, care of Farley White Management, six sixty Suffolk Street, Lowell, Mass., zero one eight five two, for property located at six sixty Suffolk Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Whereas the city of Lowell issued its request for quotes for commercial rental space for the purpose of housing a crime analysis unit within the city of Lowell for the Lowell Police Department for a period of two years, and whereas Fortune Wakefield LLC, care of Farley White Management, is the owner of the premises at six hundred Suffolk Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, and has submitted a quote to the city of Lowell in response to its request, and whereas the city of Lowell has accepted the quote submitted by said Fortune Wakefield LLC, care of Farley White Management, now therefore be devoted by the city council of the city of Lowell as follows, that the city manager be and is hereby authorized to enter into a lease agreement with Fortune Wakefield LLC, care of Farley White Management of six sixty Suffolk Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, for property located on the second floor at six sixty Suffolk Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Said lease for a term of two years, expiring on January thirty-first, two thousand and nine, subject, shall be subject to annual appropriation. Total payments under lease agreement for the entire two-year term shall not exceed twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Payable as follows, first year, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents per month, or three dollars and seventy cents per square foot. First, actually, second year, ten thousand, five sixty-six, eighty-four, eight eighty-seven, point fifty-seven per month, three dollars and seventy cents per, per square foot. Said lease agreement shall be in accordance with the form or substantial form attached here, too. Be it further voted, that the lease agreement shall contain other terms and conditions as the city manager deems to be in the best interest of the city of Lowell. Any questions?
No, just a comment. It's too bad that with all the property that we have, surplus property, that we couldn't find a way to put this criminal analysis, crime analysis unit in something we own. That's just a comment, but...
Thank you, Counselor Mercier. Second reading by title, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to enter into a lease agreement with Fortune Wakefield LLC, care of Farley White Management, six sixty Suffolk Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, for property located at six sixty Suffolk Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. In city council, February thirteenth, read twice. Roll call.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Ahmene Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Milonazzo?
Yes.
Counselor Ramirez?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Seven a's, two abs. Seven ayes, two absents. Next item is an order dedicating the corner of 17th and Humphrey as the Arthur Bonin Memorial. Whereas the city council is desirous of honoring Arthur Bonin, now therefore it is ordered that the city council of the city of Lowell, that the intersection of 17th Street and Humphrey Street in the city of Lowell be hereby designated the Arthur Bonin Memorial in honor of Arthur Bonin. Second reading by title, an order designated the intersection of 17th Street and Humphrey Street in the city of Lowell as the Arthur Bonin Memorial in honor of Arthur Bonin. Council Rita Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great pride and honor that I submit the name of Arthur Bonin at the request of his wife, who incidentally died about a month ago, and our husband's name be honored for his many years of service to this country. The site that is requested is 17th Street and Humphrey Street, and his family is delighted with the honor. He entered the United States Navy in August of 42 and was discharged in October of 1945. He received many awards and citations, and he served for many years as a member of the VFW Walker Roger Post 662 at the, in the honor guard. He wore the uniform proudly, and he will be truly missed, as will his beloved wife. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call. A motion approved by Council Rita Mercier, seconded by Council Ammon Mercier. Roll call, please. Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Councilor Ammon Mercier?
Yes.
Council Rita Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Ramirez?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Caulfield?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Eight ayes, one absent. Eight ayes, the order's approved. Next item is an order designating the intersection of Varnum Avenue and Orchard Street in the city of Lowell as the Roland Bureau Memorial in honor of Roland Bureau. Whereas the city is desirous of honoring, honoring Roland Bureau, now therefore it is ordered by the city council of the city of Lowell that the intersection of Varnum Avenue and Orchard Street in the city of Lowell is hereby designated the Roland Bureau Memorial in honor of Roland Bureau. Second reading by title, an order designating the intersection of Varnum Avenue and Orchard Street in the city of Lowell as the Roland Bureau Memorial in honor of Roland Bureau. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that name properly. Counselor-
Council Caulfield?
Council Caulfield. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bureau served this country during the Second War in the United States Navy, and his daughter, Mrs. Teresa Strohls, would be extremely proud if we could grant this wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved by Council Broderick, seconded by Council Rita Mercier. Roll call. Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Councilor Ammon Mercier?
Yes.
Council Rita Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Ramirez?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Caulfield?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Eight ayes, one absent. The next item is a communication accepting the resignation of Ann Kuna from the city, from the council on aging. Ms. Kuna sent, sent a letter indicating she could no longer meet the time commitment. The communication from the manager reads as follows: Dear Ms. Kuna, this letter acknowledges receipt of your letter dated February 2, 2007, in which you resign as a board member of the council on aging, city of Lowell, effective February 5. Your resignation is hereby accepted. I am filing your resignation in this acceptance thereof, this date with the city clerk, as required by law, and also forwarding copies as a communication to the city council. The city of Lowell appreciates your years of service, and on its behalf, I extend thanks. Very truly yours, Bernard F. Lynch, city manager. Council Rita Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I truly want to thank Ann Kuna for the many assets that she has contributed to the council on aging. She served with great pride in our seniors for eight years, and I publicly want to thank her because she was, worked tirelessly through all that time, and she was a credit to the city and to the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. She certainly was. She's also my next-door neighbor, so maybe I can get some help with this extra time and, and some gardening around the neighborhood now. Council Caulfield?
I would just like to echo Council Rita Mercier's feelings. Very dedicated individual who, whose dedication certainly shined at that senior center. Want to also put that in.
Thank you. Motion to accept the communication by Council Caulfield, seconded by Council Rita Mercier. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the communication is accepted. Next item is a appropriation transfer in city council in order to meet fixed charges and current expenses of the city of Lowell for the year 2006, 2007. Is ordered by the city council of the city of Lowell as follows, that the amount of $4,000 is hereby appropriated to parking garage salaries and wages overtime, and in order to provide for such appropriation, the above amount is hereby transferred for said profit, said purpose from parking garage salaries and wages permanent, to provide funds to continue having the parking enforcement officers, as requested by downtown residents, work overtime, which in fact generates revenue for the city of Lowell. Order recommended and introduced by Bernard F. Lynch, city manager. Second reading by title, an appropriation transfer, the amount of $4,000 to parking garage salaries and wages overtime, from parking garage salaries and wages permanent.
Move for approval.
Motion approved by Council Caulfield, seconded by Council Broderick. Any questions? Roll call. Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Councilor Ammon Mercier?
Yes.
Council Rita Mercier?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Ramirez?
Yes.
Council Broderick?
Yes.
Council Caulfield?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Eight ayes, one absent. Eight ayes, the transfer is approved. Subcommittee reports, Council Broderick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, last evening, we had a, a meeting of the ad hoc veterans subcommittee to discuss the, or implement and discuss and implement some qualifications for veteran square dedications. And it had been brought forward to the manager's office, and he brought it forward to the council. We had a meeting that, last night, with myself, Council Rita Mercier, and Council Rodney Elliott, and Council Caulfield was, was present also, and we all received some recommendations from the Veterans Council that had a Veterans Council Committee put together, from, Bob Casper was the chairman, a member from the French-American veterans, a member from the Portuguese-American veterans, William Zunes, the chaplain, and Robert Page, the president of the Veterans Council, put together some criteria. The manager and, and our representative, Mr. Joe Dussault, reviewed it. There was quite a bit of discussion, and we, the Council Rodney Elliott made a motion to recommend the, or adopt the qualifications for a square, which include, and I'll try to be brief, I know we've been here a while and some people are cold, the three automatic qualifications for being, getting a veteran square dedicated to you would be a, one, Congressional Medal of Honor, two, killed in action, or receipt of the Silver Star. Then the second tier would be, the following would have what they call great consideration for a veteran's memorial square. The applicant would need to be from Lowell at the time of entering service or currently a Lowell resident, and it would be a, they would have to be awarded at least three of the following. A service, awarded the Service Cross, which would be a Navy Cross, Distinguished Flying Cross, Distinguished Service Cross, or an Air Force Cross. Former prisoner of war, awarded the Bronze Star, awarded the Purple Heart, awarded the Air Medal. Service to the greater Lowell Veterans Community, volunteer service or some like service, a minimum of five years. They would need to provide a letter of verification from the clinic or hospital themselves. Serve as a member of the, a veterans organization, that served the Lowell Veterans Community with at least 10 years as a member, at least one term as an officer, and made a significant contribution to the unit or community as a representative of said unit. And lastly, retired from the armed services, minimum of 20 years' service, or retired from military service because of service-connected disability. One of the notes was, all documentation would be the sole responsibility of the applicant or their family. And there would be a committee formed consisting of five members. This is option B on page two for the councils that have it. It would include a, the city of Lowell veterans agent, currently Mr. Joseph Dussault, the commander of the Lowell Veterans Council, currently Mr. Robert Page, a member from the veterans, a member-at-large from the veterans, Lowell Veterans Council, as elected by its members, the mayor of Lowell or his designee, and Lowell city manager or his designee. There'd be five members, and a majority vote would control whether someone was eligible or not. Also, to be adopted or recommended was that squares be dedicated for veterans only. There was some discussion as to whether that would be too restrictive, but I think the, the general sense was that Lowell's big enough, we find private space, or fields and parks and things like that for, for private parties, as we've done for Grady Mulligan, Camille Eno, Bernie Judge at the stadium. So there's, there's plenty of other opportunities. This would be a special tribute to, to the veterans alone. And lastly, in consideration of the, the age of the veterans that participate, and the strain that it puts on them, the squares, the, the meetings would be once a year in April, and continued into May if necessary. Applications would be done within six months prior to the, the hearing, and all dedications would be done in the months of June through September, when the weather's warmer. We've all been out there when it's, when it's cold, and it's not that pleasant. This would solve a number of problems. The number we got was, there's been 380 square dedications in Lowell, 322 in the last 14 years. That's about 23 a year. So something needed to be done. This is a way of making it for people to go above and beyond in the service, and by honoring one of them, we honor all of them. And there was also a suggestion of sign color that can be, that can be worked out, in what would, what the sign would actually state. That was the recommendation, and it comes forward as a recommendation. My understanding is we, I guess we vote on it, and it becomes a policy for Mr. Dussault to enforce.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you. Council Broderick really recapped the meeting, and it was a very productive meeting, and we should be thankful that the Veterans Council took this on at the request of the manager, because as Council Broderick mentioned, we're running out of squares. We're running out of space to dedicate for veterans that deserve it, and these, this criteria came from the veterans. It was, it was their recommendation, it's their idea, they, the veterans want to recognize those, as was mentioned last night, that have gone above and beyond the call of duty. And it also puts a process in place where if a family would like to have a square dedicated, they go right to the veterans' office and submit the application, and Mr. Dussault will help with the application. And he'll look at the criteria and the, you know, the, the accreditation that they've received from, from their service and, and the armed services. So this is a very good, it's a good policy, if you will, it's not going to be a, a regulation, but it is something that, you know, we use, we can use, and, and people will know whether they're eligible or not, and it would really take, it really put those veterans in a light that they should be in because of their service. So I clearly support the recommendation, and again, thank the Lowell Veterans Council for, this took a lot of time and effort that they were willing to do for the benefit of the city, and they did a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rita Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This truly was an effort put forth by the Lowell Veterans Council. They did a tremendous amount of work on this, put a lot of effort, and really streamlined it so that we have a guideline to go by. I truly want to thank them very much, and nobody left anybody out, because your veterans' agent will be a member of that commission, which I think is a good thing that we have a committee in place. It frees Joe Dussault up, our veterans agent. He spent an awful lot of time with people going in his office and calling, and he never said no to anybody, so this kind of is like a guideline that we need. And I'm thinking with all the time that Joe has, we could cross-train him to put him in the treasurer's office anyway, after all. But anyways, this is a good, is something good, and I hope we all support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Broderick?
Lastly, an important note that was brought up by, I think, Mr. Dussault actually, was that women would not be excluded by these procedures or policy. They're eligible for all of these awards as well, and it would not in any way preclude having women qualify for veterans dedications. I know that was important last night, and that was addressed. That's, thank you.
Okay, Council Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the meeting, the subcommittee meeting last evening, and the only concern I have is you have many veterans who don't belong to a veterans organization or a unit, but who go above and beyond what's expected of, of what they do in a community. And I believe two weeks ago, a lovely man, a tremendous veteran, passed away, and he implemented and built the Ra-Ra Center on High Street. I don't think he was a member of a veterans organization. I certainly hope the committee would take that into consideration when they're looking at applications, what the individual, what he or she has done in the community, to better the quality of life, to volunteer, to help people, et cetera. So I just hope that's part of the-
Okay, thank you. So it's a motion to adopt the recommendation of the subcommittee by Council Broderick, seconded by Council Rita Mercier. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the recommendation is adopted. I too would like to thank the veterans' agent, the veterans' council, and the members of the subcommittee for their work on this issue. Thank you. Any further subcommittee reports? Okay, Councilor Elliott?
I just have a brief one. The ad hoc subcommittee on building and health code violations met this evening. I, I had thought that Mr. Camacho was going to be on board, and we could open up a discussion and a dialogue, and how we can improve and streamline health violations and building code violations. We clearly don't have the staff to, to address all of them, but there was some discussion with the manager on, on some ideas that, that we can probably put in, you know, put in place to make better resources, better use of, of the resources and the inspectors that we have. So it's just a report of progress. What was brought up by Council Donahue was, in the past, there's been an impact team where members of the fire, police, building, health, neighborhood services would go to a particular area and, you know, cite for violations and address all of the issues at that, you know, particular home or unit or apartment complex. And along those same lines, you know, there's, there's, how can we take that idea, that strategy, and make it into a more comprehensive approach to, to go through, you know, whether it's neighborhoods or certain sections of the city? Because I, it, it's a big issue, and it, you know, once one home or one apartment complex, multi-unit building starts to, you know, take on these characteristics, it, it spreads fast enough, and you start losing streets and then sections and then neighborhood, and I think we have to take them back. So just a report of progress. We'll meet again in a couple of weeks when the manager has met with the new building inspector and come up with some ideas on how to improve inspections and enforcements in the city, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not a report, but a request. Everyone received this in a packet about, it's from TJ Cooper, Secretary of AFSCME Local 1705, about you appointing a subcommittee, either the personnel subcommittee or sub-subcommittee to meet with the manager pertaining to the treasurer's office. Did you receive that, Mr. Mayor?
I, I did not notice that in the packet, Council.
I didn't get that either.
No, you didn't get that?
Nope.
It was in my packet.
Did you get that?
So I just want to bring that to your attention, that unless you want to meet with the Mr. Manager, whatever.
Well-
Mr. Manager?
If I may, I, this is the first I've heard of this. I, I certainly would be interested-
It was in my, it was in my packet, so someone had to deliver it to the-
I haven't, I haven't seen that, as I, but I certainly would be willing to sit down and meet with the, with them to discuss any issues. I'm not aware of-
Six of five thirty.
I mean, we have, we have issues related to the treasurer's office in and of itself that we've talked about at council.
I'm just bringing it forward, so those people who sent me this know that I'm bringing it forward.
When we suggest that the manager take this up, and if there becomes a need for council action or subcommittee action, we'll-
I think they just want a good, old-fashioned discussion, that's, you know, so, to address some of the issues.
Okay. Any further subcommittee reports? Okay, there is one petition for, a claim for personal injury, motion to refer to the law department by Council Rita Mercier, seconded by Council Broderick. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the petition is referred to the law department for report and recommendation. Under the motions, the first motion is by Council Milonazo. The city council requests the city manager have the traffic engineer address the timing of the traffic lights at the intersection of Andover and High Street. Seconded by Council Rita Mercier, Council Milonazo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In driving down Andover Street, I, I, the opinion that the Andover Street light is actually viewed as a secondary light, where the High Street light is viewed as the primary light, so if we could have the traffic engineer look at that, and I should come clean to say that I actually heard this request from Judge Anthes, so I just don't want to have him think that this is something I would not give him credit for. him think that this is something I would not give him credit for. But the other morning, when I was driving down to the radio station about 10 minutes of 6:00, I noticed that in fact, High Street seemed to stay green a lot longer than Andover Street. So, at this point in the evening, George is probably asleep, so, but be that as it may, it, it was his, his issue.
Yeah. He praised you today for that, so...
Given the origin of the idea, is there a request for roll call in this motion? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion is by Counselor Elliott. City Council requests the city manager meet with representatives of the Lowell Devils and review the terms of their agreement with respect to the marketing of the team and cost of operations, seconded by Counsel Broderick. Counsel Elliott?
I probably should rephrase this because I know the manager should meet with the Arena Commission and, as well as the Lowell Devils. But it just seems it was a short time ago that we were sitting down with the Devils looking at the lease, and my memory tells me that they made certain commitments on marketing and trying to expand the ticket base and, you know, for, you know, reduce costs on the lease. And I don't have any concrete evidence, if you will, that that's not taking place, but my sense is that, is that it's not. We continue to hear, you know, that numbers at the arena, at the hockey games are low, and I, I voted on, you know, on the lease knowing or hoping that that was going to go in the other direction, and it seemed that there was, you know, there was a lot of hype up to that point, and then since that time, and it's just my impression, just my perception, if you will, that, that they're not living up to that end of the agreement, and it's, it's a little frustrating. Maybe they are, maybe they can present a case that, you know, that they are doing that, but maybe we can get a report on attendance at the arena because we have a two-year lease with an option, by the way. And, you know, we can't continue to sustain that arena if, if, if things don't change. And I guess I just thought there was going to be a lot more, you know, marketing, if you will, and there was going to be a lot more outreach, there's going to be sort of a different marketing approach, and I just don't see that. And Mr. Heebin and Mr. Sullivan, they, you know, they mentioned that it's running a deficit, and it is. And we had hoped that new team, new logo was, was going to change that. So, Mr. Manager, I will amend my own motion because it is meeting with the Arena Commission. I don't want, I don't want to thank anyone that was circumventing the Arena Commission. It was, it was just an oversight. But can we get a report as well as the cost? I know that, you know, I understand that the Devils require that we have X amount of security guards, X amount of concession stands, that's costing us money regardless of the number of people in attendance. So, like, maybe it's just a wake-up call to find out what, what's going on there this year and what can we do considering we just spent another million for the ice. So, that's the motion, Mr. Mayor, and I don't want to carry on, but I hope that we can, you know, make some progress with, with the Devils, whether it's, you know, through costs or, or changing something because it doesn't seem to be working.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
If, just if I may, I think this may be something that we can fold right into the work that we're doing on the, the analysis of all of the entertainment venues, but in particular, in this case, the, the operation of the arena and the Devils as part of that operation.
Thank you. Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good motion, and I certainly will support the motion. But my concern has to do with, and I do think since they've been here, SMG has done a fairly good job, but I am concerned with the fact that they do manage Worcester and they also manage Manchester. And again, I don't know how you can actually qualify whether or not it does impact us in any negative way. I know that the, I know that obviously they're different venues, but from the standpoint of what acts actually come to the region, we actually losing some acts to Manchester, to Worcester through SMG, and I certainly hope not. But I think there's part of your review that if we, if we could look at the impact SMG has in both Worcester, Manchester, and the fact that they're here in Lowell.
Thank you. Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I support the motion. I also would ask if we can get a report or, Mr. Manager, if you can even revisit the surcharge, dollar surcharge or dollar fifty surcharge voluntary kind of thing by the Devils with them. I know when they came on board, they weren't interested in or willing to participate in that or have that part of the lease. But maybe there's been a change of heart, maybe we can go back and see if they are for at least next season. And secondly, what's the timetable on the ice? I asked this in anticipation of a motion I want to file for next week, but I'm wondering, when, when do you anticipate construction or at least design and, you know, engineering to, to start there?
The, the design is underway. The, it should be out to bid. Perhaps the solicitor can help me with some of these dates because we had a meeting with the Arena Commission just last week where we went over this. We anticipate the construction will actually begin the end of May, first part of June, but it will take June, July, August, September, 120 days to actually get the work completed between actually digging up the floor, pulling out the old system, putting in the new system, pouring the new concrete, and then letting it sit for the requisite amount of time. But that's what we're, we're looking at. So, we're on a fast track right now evaluating the system or looking at the system that's there now and redesigning it and drawing up the bid, the specifications that will then be put out to bid. The bidding process itself takes a little bit of time, that, much more time than anyone would like, but it's, that's a, that's a time, timely effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to the graduations, Mr. Manager, I contacted Tom McKay at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, and he's in discussion with Craig Gates, and they're going to see if they can reach out and help those high schools and also garner some revenue into the city.
Yes. We, we added, we had that discussion with the Arena Commission last week as well.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion is by Counsel Ramirez. City Council requests the city manager update the city council on the status of land takings throughout the city. Any objection to considering this motion in Counsel Ramirez's absence? Seconded by Counsel Milonazo. Can tell you, Counsel Ramirez did call me today feeling ill, apologizes for not being here, but he was really just trying to get a sense, Mr. Manager, of which land-taking cases have reached settlement and which ones we anticipate heading to litigation in a status of, of any litigation, if, if there is any at this point. So, that, that was the purpose of the motion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion's approved. Next motion is by Counsel Broderick. The City Council requests the city manager have the appropriate department review and report on the reserved dwelling parking ordinance. Seconded by Counsel Caulfield. Counsel Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was something brought in to me from a constituent, obviously, that lives in the city and owns a property over in the Highlands. It has to do with the resident parking, parking-only placards that are given out, and he owns a property on the corner of Pine Street and Highland Street, and the difficulty is that he had to put the, the sign on Highland Street because you don't want to be parking on Pine Street, obviously, but it's not enforceable because it has to be on the, the street address. So, I talked to the solicitor, and the recommendation was that we take a look at this because there's some other issues. I think it's somewhat outdated, it may have been around for a while, and maybe if, if there's no opposition, we could send it to, to get a report and come to the Neighborhood Subcommittee to, to review.
Okay. Motion, so this will ultimately be referred to the Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee. Counsel Caulfield?
And if my colleague would allow, I would like the solicitor to investigate ways and means of putting more teeth into this ordinance. And it's, it's aggravating, Mr. Manager. People have these signs in front of their home, and people just ignore it, they park their car there, and this gentleman here, I talked to him as well, and the sign has to have some teeth in it indicating you can't park there. If you do park there, your car should be removed. And it's aggravating in some of the congested neighborhoods, Patacable, Back Central Street, Lower Highlands, and so forth. So, if the Law Department can come back with a recommendation, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion is joint by Counsel Broderick and Counsel Milonazo. City Council requests the city manager investigate the pros and cons of instituting a pay-as-you-throw trash collection program. Since there are two of you, I don't think it requires a second. Who wants to go first?
I guess I will.
Counsel Broderick?
I don't know if that's the technical term, but that's what Mr. Wellenstein had referred to it as. A little background on this is that we've all heard presentations from our new recycling coordinator, and he does a great job. The troubling part of it is, in the presentation, we see that Lowell is only recycling about 11 percent, and we see that Worcester recycles 50 percent routinely now. But I think it was a 10-year average, it's a 39 percent difference. And if you calculate that out, it's 56, 50, excuse me, approximately $53,000 per percent, it's an awful lot of money we literally throw away. But the, the key in Worcester is they pay as they throw. So, I assume they have similar demographics in that we could at least investigate. I know we're going to have enforcement issues, and, but currently now, we have $6 million that are on the backs of the taxpayers that supplement whatever we pay for our trash at our ongoing rate. So, I think that it's a situation where everybody can win. We can, for the, be better for the environment to increase our recycling. We can, people that don't recycle can pay the burden as opposed to people that do, and people can pay for what they use. You know, you have an elderly couple that lives alone that recycles, should not be paying the same as someone, say myself, who has seven people in the house, but I do recycle. But if they don't recycle, it doesn't seem fair, and I think it's probably one of the, you know, the only ways we're going to make a dramatic increase in our recycling and to, and to take that money off the taxpayers' back. But I understand there's going to be some, some issues with it in enforcement, and right now, with paying on the taxes, it's tax deductible and so on, but, but if you could take a look at it, and I'm sure you're familiar with it. Thank you.
Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday evening, Counsel Broderick and Counsel Rita Mercier and myself attended the Belvedere Neighborhood Council meeting, and Gunther was there, gave a terrific presentation, and actually did talk about the seven largest communities in the Commonwealth where Worcester was ranked number one from the standpoint of recycling, and Lowell unfortunately was, was dead last as, as Counsel Broderick had indicated. So, this is really just to look at the pros and cons of instituting a program like this because, again, if you look at increasing the recycling program by 1 percent, it's a $53,000 savings to the taxpayers. So, again, we're not looking to have this cost the taxpayers any extra money, we're looking to view this as a, as a savings. So, I think it's something that is certainly worth looking at.
Thank you. Counsel Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had many recycling, the poppin' heads, or who you want to call it, in this city. And I don't want to be negative, but they have never shown the initiatives that Gunther Walstein has shown. He's out and about, he has a plan, and he's like the Ever Ready Battery, doesn't stop. And I, I think that this man can turn the recycling programs around in this city, I really do. And I've, I've reserved comments on the trash as you go. I would like to see how many communities have had it and how many communities have had it fail. And, but I think the recycling program in this city, under his guidance and leadership, is certainly going to turn around. I really do. And I think the mayor has set aside a week in, in the city as Recycling Week, and I, you know, give Gunther the free range and let him, let him do it. And he certainly, I know he's got everyone in this building recycling, and...
Counsel Rita Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember many years ago when Chemsford had the recycling, the bag, tag the bag. Tag the bag. And I know that a lot of people were sneaking in to Lowell from Chemsford and periodically dropping their bags somewhere. So, if it's initiated in the city of Lowell, I am going to drop my trash in Chemsford. It's as simple as that.
You have my permission.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Elliott?
It's, it's an idea. My concern is, as Counsel Rita Mercier mentioned, when people start, literally after paying for their trash to get rid of it, they start dumping it elsewhere, and, and it's a major problem. That being said, having one of the worst recycling rates in the city is, is not a good thing because it ends up costing us. I did get an email from somebody, and I know we've, we've had some ideas and some gimmicks, but the city of Everett, this is from Mr. Sargent, by the way, it was on CBS4 Boston website, there's a company in Massachusetts called Recycle Bank, and the long and the short of this, and I'll pass this on to you, Mr. Manager, is that this company comes in and, you know, they identify who the good recyclers are, and they hand out coupons that are eligible at Target and Starbucks, and, and people earn, they, they earn coupons based upon the amount of recycling that a household does. This, this email indicates that there's about $400 annually household savings. So, maybe it's another gimmick that we can at least look into and maybe it will work. If you give people an incentive, you know, my wife cuts coupons, she, we recycle anyway. But, you know, if you give people coupons, then to go to Target or somewhere, the place, it benefits the, you know, the business and it helps us recycling. It's an idea that I'll, I'll pass on. I thought it was, I thought it was a good idea. But we, you know, we really have to do something, but I do have concerns about people of just trash. And you know, it's the violators now that are not recycling that'll be the bigger violators in the future, that they'll just be dumping their trash anywhere, but it's something to look into.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion's approved.
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, I would like to take this time to thank the manager, T.J. McCarthy, all the volunteers, Tom McKay, his fundraising efforts, and everyone who attended the Winter Fest. I was there Friday evening. I didn't make it Saturday because of some, some ill health, and I just want to reach out and thank everyone for a tremendous effort, once again, bringing some entertainment to the people in our city and the suburbs as well. Thank you.
Mr. Manager? On that matter or a different matter?
Well, I'll, I'll speak to that for a second, then a, sort of a related matter, I guess, is I want to thank Counselor, it was an excellent event. I want to really thank the people that put it all together, and there, there are just literally hundreds of volunteers and the staff. Of course, T.J. was very instrumental in helping to pull this together, and, but really the staff people, the volunteers, the, those that contributed really made it all possible. It was a great event. It would have been nice if it actually probably was coming up this weekend because then we really would have had some winter weather. And that's my segue into my next announcement. As you know, we're supposed to get a major snowstorm this evening and tomorrow, and accordingly, a snow emergency parking ban went into effect at 5:00 PM this evening. This means there is no parking allowed on any city streets. Any car left on a public street is subject to being towed. Beginning at 5:00 PM this evening, free parking is offered at all city parking garages. There is no charge to any city resident for parking until the storm passes, and we ask cars to leave the garages two hours after the snow emergency parking ban has been lifted. The snow emergency parking ban is necessary to help facilitate the clearing of snow from public streets. Just a note, that driving a plow in a snowstorm is not an easy job, so we ask that residents adhere to removing their cars from the streets so the snow can be plowed quickly and efficiently, efficiently. Additionally, we'd like to remind residents that it is a homeowner's responsibility to remove snow from all sidewalks and about your home. This was an issue that was brought up just last evening at a neighborhood meeting I was at. For snow, further snow emergency information to those viewing, we'd ask that you please visit the city website, www.lolma.gov for updates or tune into local media outlets.
Wait a minute, I want to see if we were towed.
Okay. Counsel Broderick?
We're still there.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Broderick, seconded by Counsel Armin Mercier. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, we stand adjourned.
Other one down. Down slow.